Commissioner Roach.
Here.
Commissioner Haynes.
Here.
Commissioner Valers.
Here.
Commissioner Feden.
Here.
Mayor May.
Here. We do have a forum present and tonight is our regular work session. First, I do business. I'll do citizen comments. For those that have not been here before, our rules on citizen comments are citizens have up to five minutes to speak on any topic they wish, whether it be an agenda item or another issue they would like to address. And what I'll do is just at the city attorney's office, about a minute warning, but he's not here, so when we get to about a minute, I just ask you to wrap it up and I can give you a couple of extra seconds if you're in the middle of a real important conference. We just do ask that you abide by our rules and not interrupt folks when they are talking. And I'll just, first of all, are there any groups that are going to speak, like have a spokesperson that's going to speak for a whole group?
Yes, I will.
So you are. Okay. And then now, if that's the case, then the way the rule works on that, we allow a group to have up to 30 minutes, but that doesn't mean like the other members of the group get to come up and speak afterwards. Individuals can speak up to five minutes, but if you're part of a group, we ask that the group spokesperson be the person to do that. And everyone, please be respectful whether you agree or disagree with the person speaking or not.
If I speak, just as a group, can't your citizens, because I don't live here, but could your citizens also speak to that matter?
Citizens can, but if it's part of, you're going to represent SOAR.
Yes.
So anybody else that's with that group. That's how it works. That's why we gave you 30 minutes for the whole group. It doesn't mean like you get to be the spokesperson for the group, but then everybody else that's a member is going to get up and do that. That's not what the rules mean.
Yeah, yeah. I don't even have to.
So, okay.
I think we probably have more than 40 people. Chief, do you know, do we have?
I don't think we have more than 40. I think we have about 35. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
You think it's 30?
Yes, it was.
I was gonna say, it's gotta be, I knew it was close. No, it actually was. It's gotta be pushing. Just so you'll know, we do have-
Mayor, I'm only off by like three. We don't have 40.
Okay, good. Just so you know, because there's some other folks-
It's good to know. Mike Winward, guess how many marbles bubbles in the jar?
Yeah. Still coming in. So if we do get to that point, we're sorry, but we do have to enforce our capacity of 40 folks. And the fire chief and the police chief are here and they will, I'll let them, you all just let me know when we get to that point, so I'll leave it up to you guys. I don't like being enforcement. It's out of that. Okay, so I'll just start and if anybody wants to speak, just raise your hand and I will let you do your thing.
He's 40.
Rob is 40? Is that true?
You want to be 40, right?
That's good.
I am 40.
Well, a lawyer would twist it.
And if you all don't mind, just take your name. You don't have to give us your address. Just take your name and the topic you're speaking on, just for the city clerk's records.
Due to the name change, I'm Phoenix Kincaid, and you know, I'd like to start off, you know, thanking the commission, the mayor for really great leadership in a lot of areas. However, it was brought to my attention by property owners in the Thornhill area and on Riley Road in particular, that there was a property that had been taken over by the city. It was deemed a sinkhole and there's talk about geographical, seismological surveys that are going to be done on this property to build apartment complexes. Every neighbor that has come to me and asked me to come down here tonight are vehemently opposed to that. I have not, up to this point, talked to anybody in the PVA office, not spoke to any engineers, just would kind of like, you know, the response of the city commission or anyone that, you know, can give us some information. There's a lot of research that needs to be done, a lot of fact finding, but as of right now, there is not the legal two-way entrance into this property. This property was deemed a sinkhole with no ability to build on it. And so anyway, the next week, I'll have more facts, more data, but you know, we just would kind of like to see where the commission stands on it. You know, a lot of, there is so much that can go wrong with this project, you know, so people are willing to sign a petition voicing their right to oppose this. So that's all I've got to say right now.
We sold it.
We've sold it. But our question is, from the neighborhood, that property being sold, it was in the possession of the city and it has been sold under sealed bid, I believe. How can that be, you know, deemed when the city owned it, that there was no possibility to build on that property and now it looks like that, you know, they're going to try it?
They won't be able to.
I think the city attorney can help us here.
Sure.
The, as the commission knows, that property was advertised, first of all, the decision was made after review by the city staff that that property was not needed by the city. So the property was advertised for sale in the newspaper on two occasions and the single bid that was received, that bid will result in a deed which will be executed probably in about a week from now. And the people that submitted the bid are aware that whatever is done on that property has to be done in compliance with applicable zone planning zoning regulations.
I hope that answers your question.
Well, still, it's a little bit ambiguous, Mayor, that, you know, it was when, for such a long time, that it was deemed a quote "sinkhole" and no possibility to build because there had been some residents that tried to buy that property, clean it up, you know, and just let it be. And now, that seems to have changed somehow, that, you know, now they're going to, you know, bring in seismologists, all these people, which there has been a survey done on that property already, I think about three to four years ago. And I just find that, the neighborhood finds it questionable at best, that, you know, for a long time, nothing could be built on it, and now that it's sold, are they going to be able to build on it? That's-
There was never any determination that nothing could be built on it. In the 10 years that I've been city attorney, I'm not aware of any inquiries about purchasing that property from neighbors or, but anyway, the property was bid and advertised and certainly before anything's done with that property, you would have to comply with the proper zoning regulations and building regulations. So that, I would recommend that you follow the process on that, just to make sure everything's done properly.
Yeah, our planning director is in a training session tonight, so he's not here. Oh, we do have, we have Robbie Ingle.
Before they would be able to build or anything on that, they would have to have the development plan that would come through and it would be looked at by every city department that has anything to do with that. Then it would go before the planning commission in a public hearing. And you all would be able to voice your concerns at that time before, they're not going to be able to just come in and get a permit and build on it. No. There's a long process before that can happen.
Okay. Well, I appreciate, you know, your input, everybody, and you know, I will go back to the neighbors, you know, because they're really good people and, you know, most of them are elderly and, you know, they have these great concerns. So, you know, if I can be able to report to them, and I thank you.
And just like, do you have any other questions?
Thanks for you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody, just, okay.
I'll tell you what, rather than do that since-
That's true.
If you all aren't in a rush, they were saying, like the commission was saying, like, we'd like to bill those folks, go first, they'll clear out unless you all are in a rush. Okay, we actually, they'd actually called ahead, I forgot about that. It's not on, I don't know why it's on the agenda. I thought it was going to, I was thinking they were going to be in agenda item.
I did too.
Yeah, so, for some reason, it just didn't make it on our agenda there. So, did you all think the same thing?
I thought it was going to be an agenda item.
Can somebody just move to make it an agenda item right now?
Well, if I let him speak, it'll be the same thing.
That's fine.
Okay. If you want to go ahead.
Tracy.
Tracy, I'm sorry. Do you want to go ahead?
Can I go? I'm Tracy Miller and I'm the founder and president of Speak Out and Rescue.
Can you come, we need to hear you on the chain.
I'm the founder of Speak Out and Rescue and we advocate on behalf of dogs that live outside on chains. And back in 2014, our group worked with the commission then to get an anti-tethering law passed. And at first, it appeared that it was working and being enforced, and now it has come to our attention months ago that it is not. And I have copies of that ordinance with me if the commission would like to see it. And so we're here to ask why it is not being enforced. I have heard that it can be misinterpreted and read one way, and so I'm here to ask the commission if we could go back over that and revise it, because apparently it's the word "attending" that is not, has not been spelled out. So we need to go back in and revise that. So it will be a strong law that cannot be misinterpreted, because now you have dogs being chained up all over your city again. And this dog in particular is one that we are very concerned about. It's a pit bull named Drake that is being chained up on Shankel Lane. And animal control does know about it and he's been there several times and nothing is being done about it. This dog is not being fed and watered. He's on a very short chain and it's just a matter of time with him being unneutered, that he's going to get very frustrated, break that chain and, you know, there's a lot of children in that neighborhood. So we would just like to-
Can I ask you to read the sentence that's got the word "attending" in it?
Yes. A person is considered to be attending a dog while tethered if the dog is under the person's direct and immediate control and supervision. We thought that was very clear back in 2010, that you could not sit in your house while your dog was outside being chained, because clearly you're not attending your dog. But animal control has told us that his boss and others have instructed him that that's okay. So we would like for that to be addressed.
So really, just to make it clear, the law that we passed, you said 2014, I think it was 2010.
Oh, 2010.
2010.
2010.
I think at the time, there was discussion about how that could be interpreted, remember when the commission members bringing, you weren't here, you all weren't here.
No, I wasn't, you're right.
Yeah.
How can yours go?
This is what, before I go, I'm going to-
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
So I was going to say, so there was some issue with that in terms of when the members actually bringing that up. And I think that was something that we did discuss and some of us did have concerns about how that could or could not be interpreted.
I know where that's coming from, because back then, Commissioner Wouter, he wanted it to read like that, that people could still be in their house and as long as they could see their dog being chained outside, that that would be okay. But that is not what that commission voted for. We all know that they meant that the dog had to be physically attended, but that word "physically" was not put in there. And so now, if people can be at home just watching their TV and their dogs outside, and it takes five minutes for a dog to hang itself. And that's why the law was passed in the first place, because a dog named Big Boy hung himself in his own backyard.
Did you say you had a copy of it?
Yes.
I've looked at that before and I don't have it with me, so if I could have a copy, I'd appreciate it.
We'll get one tomorrow. Well, here's a few there.
And I think too, after some folks had brought that to my attention, I have had conversations with our attorney and police chief and others about that. And in terms of, some folks thought that maybe the police officers and the animal control were just intentionally ignoring it. And I will assure you that our police officers and our animal control officers do care about animals, but they felt, I think the city attorney can probably explain better how courts interpret our laws and how we have to go through the county attorney's office on prosecutions. And sometimes their office interprets our ordinances differently than we do. And therefore, I'm going to turn that over to the city attorney so he can actually explain.
The commission probably knows this, but maybe the folks in the room don't, and that is, the reason why the ordinance was passed is there was one dog that was up, I believe, in the neighborhood, up by the armory, and fell off his porch and hung himself, which was, my understanding, the, I don't know that that's ever happened before or since, but in any event, the ordinance was changed and the language "direct and immediate control and supervision" was placed in the ordinance. And it has been the city's interpretation and also the county attorney's interpretation, that direct and immediate control and supervision does not require you to be standing near your dog or within 10 feet of your dog, but that as long as you are in your house and you are looking outside the window, if you're at the kitchen window doing the dishes and you can see that your dog in front of you, that in that instance, you are in compliance with the ordinance. Now, does that mean that you can put your dog on a leash and go to sleep, put your dog on a chain and go to bed for 10 hours? No, it doesn't. But if you are monitoring your dog and have that dog in your sight, then you are in compliance with the ordinance. Now, I know that Ms. Miller doesn't agree with that interpretation. And, you know, certainly if the commission wants to amend the ordinance, they can. However, before doing so, I would recommend that you speak with Chief Will Hoyt, with our animal control officer, and also with the county attorney's office, to make sure that they are going to enforce. And I know that certainly Chief Will Hoyt and Officer Pardue will, but we need to talk to the county attorney's office to see whether or not they're interested in enforcing a more stringent tethering ordinance than we currently have.
My concern right now is actually the dog on the picture that was there, it sounds like he has been reported. And I think I heard that, you say not being fed yet?
He's not, he's very thin. Every time we checked on him, and we've had other people in the community that has checked on this dog, he's never had any food or water. In winter, the only time he was given a straw was because a volunteer took it to them and a 50-pound bag of food. These are college students that own this dog and they simply don't care. And they should be cited for it. And I beg to differ, because anybody that followed us back in 2010, and Bill, you know, you were a commissioner then, we know what that law was supposed to be. And all they have done is found a loophole. And that loophole is how you're reading it now, to not enforce it. And I'm sorry, but today, I think we all know Representative Brian Quarles, he is my representative in Scott County. He lives down the road from me. And he looked this over for me. And he has said exactly that, that they have found that loophole because of the word "attending," to not enforce it and to ask this commission to put in the word "physically accompany," because-
But even that could be like, that could even be like interpreted different ways too. Like, everything can be interpreted different ways, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I have-
There are provisions in the ordinance which say that you can't maltreat a dog. So for instance, if the dog is not being fed or if it's not being watered, I mean, the ordinance precludes that. And if that's the case, and Officer Pardue thought that was the case, then the dog's owners, whether they're college students or some other age, could have been cited.
Back in 2010, when this passed, Mark was supposed to have door hangers made for him, so he could put on people's door to say if they were in violation of the law. Here we are, four years later, and he still does not have those. He does not use those, because he doesn't have any. They were never made for him.
Is that true?
Tracy, I'm sorry, is our whole 30 minutes being used up this way?
Yes.
Because as a citizen who is familiar with some of these issues and has been involved, not with this dog, with some other dogs, with being with Mark, and I want to be sure to be able to share that.
Yeah, now, if you're not part of her group, I know some folks with her name, with SOAR, if you're probably a citizen, not affiliated with the group, yeah, we're going to allow people to do that. But just, we don't want, if there's 10 people from a particular group-
Our organization covers eight counties in Kentucky, doing what we do. And back in 2010, your city, our capital city, was one of the worst cities that we cover. We were here all the time. The board here is just, it was littered with chained dogs everywhere. We spent a lot of time here, just the dogs chained all over the place. And then, once the ordinance got passed, I mean, it was working. We built several fences here and that's part of what we do. If people will get their dog off a chain, we build fences for low-income people. We pay for them. We even paid for your dog to be spayed or neutered along with that. And now, here we are again. They're just cropping up all over the place. And I would not think that you would want that in your city.
I wasn't here in 2010, and I'm old. I think there's a fundamental question. I don't know what the answer is. And I think the question stems to resources and enforceability. So there's really three positions. You can take a, you can change the language in order to make it the strict language which you advocate. And then the question becomes, is that enforceable? And if it is enforceable, what will it cost to enforce? There's that question. Then there's the one where we have it now, where it's somewhat looser because of that interpretation. And you've got a lot of other things that are covered, like feeding and that kind of thing. And, but it is hard to determine. And then there's another position, which is you don't have an anti-tethering law, because it's not enforceable. So it looks to me like there's three, there's three kind of ways to look at it. I don't know which way I would be for at this moment in time, but it looks to me like it all sort of stems toward this enforceability. And I don't think it, to be unusual, that a body would move toward that middle ground, which is where we've kind of moved toward, because that is a, I suspect that that is a difficult thing to enforce. It's not difficult in the sense that you can see it, but it's difficult in the sense to use your manpower for that.
It's not true. It's completely the opposite. And I have a folder here of different states and cities across the country, because we've done our homework before we ever started doing any of this. It does work, even if you have one officer, like you have Mark. It works. Because what happens is, most chained dogs are barkers. You get a call about barking, it's usually coming from a chained dog, because that's just not their nature. They're not meant to be kept confined like that. If you have a tethering ordinance, that cuts down on your barking. It is very easily enforced and it does not cost any extra money. And I, I mean, I have the backing to prove it, if you wanted to see my files and read through some of these ordinance from other cities across the nation. I mean, Kentucky is not, we are the number one statement nation for animal abuse. And we've held that title for eight years now in a row.
Wow. Did you say something about who's supposed to have the hangers?
Animal control was supposed to be giving hangers and he was never given that.
Well, I think that's a good starting point for us, if anything, to ask why that's not being enforced and why those aren't being cited when animals are being called upon, especially if it's multiple calls.
Well, if you're asking me-
Well, you're the closest one I got, I guess.
Well, if the question is, are we not enforcing it, I disagree with you, as far as getting information to the owners and whatever. Mark, these folks have had his cellphone number and they call him and let him know when there's dogs that way. He goes to the location, talks to the owners. Now, I cannot speak to any specific case, because I don't know the details. But I think there's one case that's in contention right now between Mark and Lieutenant Sutton and SOAR, that the animal has been seen by a veterinarian, the veterinarian says it's fine, but somehow, there's some disconnect there. Just off the top of my head, I think there's a portion of the law that, when it was written, to give a warning period of seven days, time, a period for compliance, which means, once somebody complies, the clock starts over again. So you can still get, you know, repeated complaints until that compliance time has, if compliance hasn't been achieved within that time period, then that triggers the offense. So perhaps that's something else that can be looked at. Or I may be, like I say, this just off the top of my head, I may be looking, you know.
No, you're right, Mark, because the ordinance, which is Section 90.315D, says that if the owner, once he's asked to comply, if the owner does not comply with this section, within seven days of issuance of this notice, the dog may be impounded and the owner shall be fined, as set forth in Section 90.99C.
If I may say one more thing. I would venture to say, there are probably no cases that, once Mark has been notified that there's a violation there, that he did not check out or did not talk to somebody. He would not leave an animal in a dire condition without taking some affirmative step, contacting the owner or contacting the street unit to, you know, helping with judicial process. I would be very surprised. I would be shocked to my core if there was an instance that Mark overlooked or-
We are not saying that. I'm saying that he has been to Drake's house, but we know twice. I mean, but yet, the dog remains like that. He even, you know, pulled his doghouse apart. And it was like 20 degrees that day, because I got a call saying that this dog tours doghouse. And I drove all the way from Georgetown to see if that was true. And I took those pictures. I was not on their property, but I took those pictures. That's just wrong. And he had no food and water. I mean, why is this allowed to go on?
Well, we can only operate within the confines of the law. And this is the best form for it.
Right. And if the board wants to change the ordinance, it can, because there was discussion about requiring you to be within a certain feet, number of feet with your dog. There was discussion about saying physically attending, but those proposals were rejected. And instead, the words "attended by its owners" were used by the commission. And their discussions at that time indicated an intent that if you were in your house, washing the dishes, you know, looking out your kitchen window, that, and your dog was on a tether and you could see your dog, that in that event, you were complying with the ordinance. And I, you know, I understand where you're coming from, Ms. Miller, but that's my recollection. What's supposed to be, on this door handle thing, what was supposed to be on that?
That they were in violation.
It's a notice. But what I'm saying is, is Mark goes a step farther and makes contact with the people.
Or if there's an education piece.
Probably there's always an education piece.
It was supposed to be to tell them that they were not in compliance with the law, that there was an anti-tethering law. And to give them X amount of time to correct the problem. And if they couldn't afford a fence or make other arrangements, then Mark, he was calling us and we would come down and, you know, try to assist the owner. But now, we don't get those calls, because it's okay for people to sit in their house while their dog's being chained. I mean, really, Drake is chained 24/7. He is never in the house. You mean to tell me that somebody is looking out their window 24 hours a day, watching him while he's being tethered? I know that's not true, because he never has food and water.
There is language that addresses that situation, because the ordinance says that a dog may be temporarily tethered.
Yes.
Okay. And if the dog's out there, you know, 24/7, that's not most people's definition of temporary.
Can I speak to this as a citizen?
Yeah, when she gets through the room, we'll open that up. Yes. So I guess the question too is, Ms. Miller's here to say, or request that we change our ordinance to tie- ordinance to tie it up to, to close that loophole, if you want to call it a loophole. And I think, I think we, we were back and forth. There's a lot of three-to-two votes that night to pass this, and this was the closest that we ever got. I think three people to agree with. There's some things that some of us knew would have to be revisited. And we've got four new people that all may completely agree that, that loophole needs to be closed, or may not have an issue to, to be addressed. It's just, I think they're all gonna need to see something proposed that, as the city attorney said, that the city police department and animal control folks can use as a tool to prevent this type of thing, and also that the county attorney will support. Sometimes, we do get crossways with the county, with the prosecutors. So we, we need to make sure that whatever we come up with, if our folks follow through on it. And, and as Chief Willock said, I, I know that our animal control officer, on numerous cases I've been aware of, has made that direct contact with, with owners. So the one good thing, I guess I'm encouraged is that, based on what you've said and from what I've seen, that, that there has been some progress with the number of animals that were being just left out, so.
There, there was great progress at first. I mean, and then, suddenly, it's just like, somebody decided to, oh, well, let's just now tell the owners. And Mark has told us that he's been now told to tell people that it's okay for them as long as they're in the house. And we have rescued one such dog, a dog named Emma, when we first got the call that this wasn't being enforced. And we went there, and sure enough, there she was, living out in her backyard. And the owner had even taped a sign to his tree, saying, "Stop feeding my dog. You're spoiling it." And the neigh-, he wasn't feeding the dog, so the neighbors were. We have since rescued that dog. And...
And I think to address the food and water issue, our ordinance that was already in place covers that section, the, the definition and cruelty to animals, and the penalty section. Is it 99C or?
Well, 90.31 addresses cruelty to animals, and it specifically says that action declared to be unlawful includes, "No person shall fail to provide his or her animals with sufficient wholesome and nutritious food, water in sufficient quantities, proper air, shelter, space, and protection from the weather, veterinary care when needed to prevent suffering, and humane care and treatment." So our cruelty to animal ordinance is pretty broad. It provides pretty broad protections.
Would you want us to, and we can, if you have some suggested language that we could give to the city attorney to run past, county attorney and others, then, do you have anything tonight to give, or do you want to just submit something later?
I just know that, like it is, it's not being enforced. So whatever we gotta do to... Here's the thing, even if it was left like it is, at first, it was working. Why does Mark even have to tell anybody that it's okay to sit in your house and, while your dog's chained out? Why couldn't he just say, "You're in violation of this law"? I mean, since when do you have to tell people that they can sit in their house? And even like Drake, I mean, he clearly has got a lot of things going wrong. If Mark's been there twice, why haven't they at least been cited? Why hasn't he taken the dog?
Well, I don't know if they have or haven't been cited. I guess...
They have not been cited.
We can reset that, but...
I talked to Mark.
One thing I do want to say, though, I will say, I know it may appear that our officers are not enforcing, because of the way the loopholes, I'd like just to correct that, say, due to the, the wording and that loophole, our officers are unable to enforce it the way I think you're asking it be enforced until the law's changed. So based on the current sketch, current ordinance, I believe our, our officers are doing the enforcement as what the law allows them, as passed by the previous commission. And I think, just to clarify, you're asking this commission to, to fix that?
Yes.
And I just want to make that...
With our help. We would, because we have a lot of information. We can educate your commission of, that this, it can be enforced. It does not cost more manpower, and it does not cost money.
May I ask for this commission to, to allow this group to be put on it in another agenda, so that we can have an ample amount of time to discuss, while allowing this group to give us some of her information, so that we can look over and be better prepared to, to discuss this topic?
Sure. And just to let you know, Ms. Miller, there are some other folks that have, that would just to talk about some other sections of our animal control ordinance. So we, we're probably gonna look at a broad, do, just take a broad look at it. And when that was passed in 93, I believe it was, the first animal control...
92.
92. Close. I was on the commission then, too, so I know the whole history of, of all of this. And when, when it started, we knew instead of the time, there'll probably need to be changes made as, as things are brought to us. And so, obviously, this is one of those changes that needs to be addressed and looked at, and we decide, are we gonna leave it like it is, or are we gonna make it stronger so people can't do it? I think you all know where I, I still stand on my previous support, and understand why it's not healthy or, or good for animals to be chained, or tied up with a rope, or restrained in any, any, any fashion. And I'm sure that commissioners that haven't had the opportunity to hear that, will have that opportunity to look through materials that, that you all have, and that others that may speak tonight may have, in support or in opposition to that. Do you want to add, if you have anything else you want to add?
Sorry?
Do you have anything else you want to add? Well, one more thing, Commissioner Bowers wanted to ask her a question before she, and then we're gonna open it up, and then, I believe...
No, I just wanted to ask one question. Could you take a head count, since there's only 40 people out in the room, of how many people are here to support her? Just, I mean, for the, since you said you were making a record of this. I just think it's...
Well, how many people are opposed to tethering dogs 24/7?
And the language at all?
We can, I was gonna recognize Commissioner Bowers first, because I already recognized her, since she is a commissioner, and then I'll come back to that, Commissioner Bowers.
I was just gonna suggest, there's a, there's a, the word temporary in the ordinance, and I think that temporary is just like the word attending. It's subject to interpretation. Temporary could be six months. And, and I think that that needs to be more concrete, down to like, maybe not more than two-hour period of time in a 24-hour span. I think that needs to be concrete, because if you make that concrete, then I think the, the word attending is not gonna be as important. So I think the word temporary needs to be... What is temporary? You know, I don't know about dogs, but I would think anything more than two hours in a 24-hour period might be considered neglect. I don't know.
Well, you definitely don't want anything with a time limit that's specifically saying two, four, six, or eight hours, because you cannot prove that unless you physically are there filming it. It is not...
Well, actually, you could have the officer drive by, and if he sees it at 2:15 PM, and he makes a couple of rounds, and it's still there, you can start to make some assumptions. And then, once you assume that, then you can actually sit there and watch it, yes, you can. And if you really want to get somebody, that's how you'll do it. So if you, if you get a report from a neighbor, this dog has been chained for six hours, and an officer comes and sees it, and comes back around an hour later, and then makes one more trip around, absolutely, I think that would be enough to do something with.
No, but then they could say, well, my, I took my dog in for, you know, a little while, and then I just put it back out there. So...
But my point is, if you really want to catch somebody, you can absolutely do that. It's possible. And if you're gonna talk absolutes, then you can't, I mean, there's always people that will say, no, that's not true. I mean, it doesn't matter what the law is. But you can't get it exact. And I think that's what you're here telling us. And we're not gonna get it exact, but we can do better. And the word temporary is, to me, that's more atrocious than the word attending, when it comes to being so vague. But that's the recommendation I would make, Rob, is that we can work on that.
I've made a note.
Okay.
And then, Commissioner, did you want to say?
Well, I just wanted to say that I actually support Commissioner Herring's recommendation, because, first of all, I thank you for bringing this to my attention, because I have not seen it. And, but, you know, we all live in different neighborhoods, so I didn't, it wasn't even where it was a problem. And, but I do think, you know, when you bring something the first time, you know, it's kind of hard to get all your thoughts and wrap around all the what, the what-ifs. So I, I think putting it on a, a different agenda to actually see, because I've even learned some things tonight about, you know, that dogs can't be not fed and stuff. There's already something there. So those, you know, and we do have other groups that are concerned about, especially when it's cold, animals left out in the cold, and some things that need to be done. So we need to look at the whole thing and get it as close to right as we can. So I appreciate you, you know, working with, you know, you say you have a lot of information there. That information should be shared, and, you know, maybe get it a lot closer than we have it right now.
Thanks for coming. If you could email the city or whatever, so that we can get the information to look at before the, when you all come on a work session, that would be great.
Are you still, do you still have the big packets?
I, I can...
Or could you, is it, I guess the question, as Commissioner Oakes said, I always prefer to get things electronically, but I didn't know if all that information is electronic, because a lot of those, there was posters...
I'll take it however you have it.
Okay.
Okay. Because there was, there were posters and other...
Yeah. So are we gonna be on for the next big meeting, and so we could then show a PowerPoint and be more...
Well, it would be, the May...
The work session or the...
Work session. And then, that way, you'll have...
So not in the big room?
Well, we may, we may need to be in the big room. I suspect that if a lot of folks show up, that we'll probably have to be in the big room, because this one is so limited, that there'll be, just based on my...
Because it always, it's really helpful if we can show a PowerPoint, so if people...
This room has the ability as well. There's a screen that can come down, and we can set it up on the table.
Okay.
Just, I, I think in the past, as I, as Ms. Miller was saying, we have so many folks show up for the animal issues, that you'll probably end up being in the bigger, everybody, because of the other groups that are gonna speak about, whatever issues, the animal cruelty part. But no, thanks for being here, and I'm, I'm glad that you'll bring this to our, to our attention. I know that our folks will follow up definitely on the situation you addressed. And then, if y'all want to, I mean, it's, it's informal in a work session. If you want to just informally, just, you don't have to participate, but if you came here to support the anti-tethering, or no tethering portion, then just let us know. Just raise your hands. That's for...
It's both of mine. I can't hear you.
You could have put your sleeve down. We're gonna see. And then, were anybody here to speak against that? Or is everybody... And there, I, I know last time, there were people that spoke against that because of different...
I think that two people.
Different reasons and... Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, I think, Ms. Bradley, did you want to say something, and then?
I do. Um, I'm gonna just stay right here.
You can't, it doesn't matter.
I can't hear as well.
Oh, um, Ms. Davis said she, it would be easier if you came up to the table, so she can hear your testimony easier.
Okay. I wanted to ask, could I ask...
No, like in that mode.
Could I ask Tracy something that won't come out of my few minutes? I just didn't get a chance. Well, all I wanted to know is...
She doesn't have to answer, but if, do you want to, if you could just...
Do you have a copy of Lexington's ordinance? And if so, are you happier with their wording? Because when we started ours, Lexington already had one. But rather than, and it was suggested that maybe we could look at theirs, but instead, we just did our own thing. So I didn't know if you...
Lexington actually does not have any type of anti-tethering.
We're one of the first cities that can do it.
Louisville does, and we do not want that language.
I knew we didn't want somebody. Okay, all right.
Right now, as it stands, Frankfurt has the best anti-tethering law in the state. So if we can just, I mean, hit it right, it would be a model for others to follow.
Which...
What happened was, in 2008, we tried to get, Lexington was the first city that we approached for tethering ordinance, and that failed. But what they did was, they went in and they made a lot of adjustments to their language that was already written on cruelty. They took our advice, and they spelled out what adequate is also another word that can be misinterpreted. So we spelled out what, you know, having adequate shade is, what food is, what everything is now spelled out in Lexington. And that was due to us helping them with that language.
Okay, thanks. And I wanted to address something Lynn said that came up, about language, possibly the word temporary. Well, I've always thought of that as transitional. The person who walks to pick pack, and so many people do that, and they stick the dog outside, run in and do their, transitional is very different, I think, maybe. So we do need to look at the language. And I see this as an opportunity, while we are once again hearing in the state legislature, where they're trying to get some anti-cruelty things passed, and they're not voting on, they're not voting on them, and people keep adding amendments and muddying them up. And I, Janine, they haven't been voted on yet, have they?
They've pretty much all failed.
Failed, oh, okay. That's even worse. You know, and then, we've got a legislator or a candidate who's saying things like cockfighting is part of our tradition and our heritage. So I think it would be really neat if we could make this much stronger. The issue I see, and it's, it's a sticky one. I don't even know how to approach it. I have been with Mark involved in a couple of these things. One with a neighbor behind my house, who went to Hawaii and left the dog chained out. And you talk about tearing up the doghouse and every, and somebody came and threw food over the fence. However, the county prosecutor told, well, I was gonna clean up the feces that the dog was sitting in, and he told Mark that I could be arrested for trespassing, and we had to leave the dog like that. Now, Mark was able to go in. And I, I'll tell you the truth, I went in, I untangled the dog, and I cleaned up the mess, because I couldn't, I just couldn't. It's the next door to me. But, and it was over the weekend, and we all knew the man was in Hawaii, but he was supposed to be given these number of days. There's, there's just a lot of little stuff, sticky stuff. The other part is, and, and again, I've been with him on an issue where he doesn't have door hangers, but he, he does have a notice, and he put the notice on the door. And the people were home, and the car was in the drive, and they wouldn't answer the door. So I don't think they were attending this very elderly, arthritic dog who had a little shelter, but it was so crippledy, it couldn't really get up and down very well. And the food, when it rained or snowed, just came on it. But Mark did attempt to reach the people. And when I followed up with him the next day, he said that his supervisor told him they were there, they could see out the window. And he couldn't do anymore. And I think, and then I'm hearing that we have an ordinance, but a single individual, our prosecutor, is the person who gets to determine whether it's worth enforcing or not. And, and again, as I said, Mark is between a rock and a hard place, because he's not gonna say, well, you know, my supervisor said, "Don't do that." And he really, he goes so far out of his way to do the very best he can for some of these animals. But he's not about to defy a supervisor who says, "Leave those people alone. Don't go back." So just, I don't know whether it's a top-down thing or what, but from what I'm hearing, starting with, well, can we even enforce it? Does the prosecutor want to bother with it? Tracy mentioned that in the beginning, this was working pretty well. Well, somewhere in there, Mark's supervisor changed. So, I don't know. But those are, I just think we need to look at all of those things. And you guys have ways of finding out what's really going on. And I, I guess I'd like to ask you to kind of look a little, little deeper, but in the meantime. And I volunteer with Life House, and I volunteer with the Domain Society, with the TNR. So I'm not just, and I won't tell you how many animals I have, so, rescues. I'm not just coming in here blowing hot air, I hope. So I just appreciate you guys eagerly digging into this. And it would be nice to put it to bed, finally.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Lynn?
Okay, um, I'm a...
I need her name.
Oh.
Oh, Janine Sloan. And I was here back in 2010 during the discussions in several of the meetings. And when we hashed through everything, all of these concerns, like you brought up, Ms. Bowers was talked about. And it all boiled down to, how do you enforce the ordinance? Because they were not gonna pass the ordinance that was not enforceable. So in the discussion, it came out that the animal control officer had to be able to visually see if the law was being broken or not. Now, he doesn't know if you're sitting in the house looking out the window. So that's why it said that you had to be attending the dog. Because if he goes up and he sees, is someone 14 or over attending that dog? Physically was really the way it was, but the word physical didn't go in there. Physically was really the way it was, but the word physical didn't go in there. Enforceability is the main thing, and that's what this is based on. So the definition of attending was also put in there so that there wouldn't be a question four years later. But with the change of authority, it has. When it comes to the temporary tethering, that was also discussed. And vividly, one of the scenarios that they talked about is a guy's walking down the road with his dog on a leash and he sees a neighbor and he stops to talk to him and he ties him to a pole while he's standing there. That's temporary tethering on a leash. You know, that is not, he's not going to be cited for that. The reason we didn't put hours in is so that there wouldn't be more manpower. We don't have the resources to have somebody drive by every hour, every two hours. This was to save money and need no more manpower by the ACO getting a complaint, him coming there and visually immediately seeing if the law's being broken. So it says, if you're 14 or over, you must be attending the tethered animal for it to not be a violation. I don't know where the breakdown is or how we can close that. Because in a few years, we'll have another turnover of commissioners and authorities. So let's try to do it ironclad where there's no question. The goal of this is so that it's not 24/7. We don't want a dog living a jail sentence. Makes them aggressive, they are a liability to the community. If they get loose, they will harm someone. Aggression comes in chained dogs over time. Mark Pardai is a great animal control officer. He goes above and beyond. He goes to every call that he gets, that is not being disputed. But his hands are tied. And he would do more if allowed. And he did, as Tracy said, we were very successful at the beginning. This other part of the neglect of no feeding and food and all, you know, water, it usually goes hand in hand. If they're chained, they either don't have a doghouse, or they don't have food or water, or it's froze, or it's mossy, slimy, it's been there so long, or it's frozen. It just kind of goes hand in hand. But we just want to prevent 24/7 chaining. How do you enforce it immediately so it doesn't cost us money? And you know, it can bring money into the city. We can find them. They don't have to have their dog taken away immediately. You know, they've got the seven days to comply. Find them, but you know, before we get to taking the dog. But we can't leave the dog that way indefinitely. So any consideration in making this strong and enforceable, please do.
My name is Jenny Neat. I'm with the Way Home Rescue Alliance. I'm a transporter of rescued dogs and cats. I live here in Frankfurt. And I think anything that can be done to make this a stronger law would be in order. And it sounds to me, with just what I'm hearing, is that it sounds like the neglect of not feeding and watering dogs needs to be enforced as well. And if that is a situation that is known, why hasn't that been enforced? And I do need to go, but, and I'm, thank you for being able to speak.
Thank you so much for being. Anyone else on? I think we all know that the majority of folks on this set are other than our staff. And maybe the staff does, we'll put you in that spot, but came to support.
Can I say one more thing?
Of course.
I'm a former board of director for the Humane Society. And I'm still very close affiliated with them. And I'm aware that they have submitted some language to you to update an ordinance. Please just bring everyone together and put together something good, you know, a collaborative effort. And there's already a good ordinance on the books and I don't want to see it weaken.
I'll offer one comment or a couple in support of Mark Pardai as well. I live in the county and as.
Name, please.
C.C. Mitchell. Cecilia, but I go by C.C. And as Gippy Graham said a couple of years ago, when I said, I don't live in the city, I live in the county, he said, that's all right. But anytime I see a stray animal, being an animal lover, I stop, I pull over, I secure them. Mark Pardai has always come, no matter where I was. He's met me at the Humane Society to take stray animals that I've picked up in the city from me. Turn him loose, he's, he's got sense. Everybody knows him. He's, I mean, does anybody think Mark Pardai is fanatical in his enforcement or had to be reined in? He's trained our new county animal control officer. You know, they work together and he shadowed him. Mark's a good guy, we all support him. So I just wanted to reiterate, nobody's criticizing him. We, we like him, turn him loose.
Thank you so much. Well, you're part of that group, so.
That group?
You know that group. No, sorry, sorry. Thank you, Commissioner. But we do, I mean, it's good we noted that the folks that were here tonight spoke in favor of making the ordinance stronger. Is anybody that wanted to speak on this issue anymore? If not, yes ma'am.
I would like to.
Do you mind saying your name for that?
Ask one question. I'm sorry, my name is Debbie Horn. I would like to ask one question. I, Tracy was mentioning that they had been out to see Drake, I guess at least two or three times. And each time he didn't have food or water. And if it's a law that someone gets cited, then why were these people not cited the second time that this dog was found without food or water? I'm just curious.
Well, it just occurs to me that there's another problem if somebody says we can't prove. The owner can say, I just fed him, the dish is inside. I mean, I'm not saying that we shouldn't cite him, but you've got to have some way to actually prove that the dog's not having food and water. And again, unless you're going to sit there and watch it. And you know, we have officers circling in the neighborhoods. It's not that expensive for them to take another drive-by 30 minutes later and 30 minutes after that, because that's what they do. So I think that we need to go after the food and water, but there again, you've got the problem of proving that the owner didn't feed it unless you're having people drive by. And so in order to get people, you're going to have to have the officers drive by and verify that, yes, that this dog's been here for X amount of time. Or that proving that the dog has not eaten is a little bit more difficult to do. I mean, unless you're looking at the body of the dog and it's just emaciated. And if you're going to use the emaciation as proof, then that's another, that's, that's one thing you could use. But you can't prove that people haven't fed their dog. And so there's all kinds of problems with enforcement and that's what you guys are telling us. And I think we have to have something concrete that we can actually see, that it can be recorded, and then it can be, you know, attached.
In Lexington's language, they now have it so that it reads that dogs must have food and water at all times. And they have to be in a receptacle that allows that and a free flow of food and water at all times. And that's how they should go.
They have that, it releases as they eat it.
Because in the winter time, in three minutes, the dog's water freezes. So they should have access to water at all times.
Okay.
Or if they're chained, I could tell you how many times I've seen bowls turned over.
Right.
Yes.
Dog is stuck on a chain, it's trying to get a little bit of exercise. Its chain hits their bowl, maybe fresh water, maybe fresh food, it's drowned. And hours and hours and hours go by.
Now, we don't have that in our ordinance, correct, Rob?
Have what? That you have to feed the dog at all times?
Those containers that release the food, that's.
No, we do not specify that.
Well, I mean, that's.
We merely provide, it really, it merely states that no person shall fail to provide his or her animals with sufficient wholesome and nutritious food, water in sufficient quantities, proper air, shelter, space, and protection from the weather, veterinary care when needed to prevent suffering, and humane care and treatment. That's what our ordinance says.
Well, maybe we want to take that little piece that Tracy's talking about and add that language.
If your Humane Society Board is working on new language for cruelty, I think that they should maybe ask stores at the end to work on this.
They're not working on that section.
Yeah, that's not the group that's, there's another group, another folks.
No.
Well, thank you all for being here. Just understand this commission will review all that and we'll give you some history. The reason that, at the time that these laws got passed previously, there was discussion about trying to make it too narrow-focused and that makes more loophole, more specific that sometimes the terms are, the more difficult it is, it almost has the opposite effect. So we try to figure out how to balance that and make it work. And we're here and we'll all listen and I'm sure we'll discuss it more in May and have, try to get all the animal groups to come on the same night.
What night is that, please?
A work session. A work session. Is it right? 13, 12? 13? May 12. 12, May the 12th. Well, May 12th.
They'll be on at 5:07. I don't know. It depends on how many people sit in comments. All right, well, thank you all for being here.
Thank you all.
Thank you, see you next month. Not before.
And just like, our folks are going to follow, they'll follow up on everything that you all said tonight. We promise.
Tracy, if you're going to send us some language, if you'll send it to Ramona and then.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. That awareness has got a lot of problems, doesn't it?
We're ready. Okay. Thanks for, thank you all for indulging us on that. Somebody told us that.
Interprettable.
And we had told them initially, they were supposed to.
Different, this is especially for these.
I'm Richard Meyer and I'm here to talk about us landlords and property owners. And most of us, I would say, in opposition to the runoff tax, the proposed runoff tax here in the city of Frankfurt. And you know, for, for about the past seven years, you know, most of us property owners have been faced with some very difficult times, which have resulted in losses in revenue and a trend of depreciating values in our properties. You know, some of us have survived and, you know, some of us haven't, as you know. It's been difficult times. You know, our expenses are at an all-time high, including water, sewer, electric, property taxes, they don't seem to go down. Insurance doesn't seem to go down. Garbage fees, lawn maintenance, inspection fees, that was a new one. You know, when you turn over a property, you have to have inspection fee. And then all fuel, fuel-related products such as carpet, linoleum, roofing, and siding.
And what?
Vinyl siding, you know, anything, those are all fuel-related products since our, you know, fuel has gone up so much in the past seven years. So you know, we, we keep looking for, where's our break? Well, maybe we can raise our rents, you know? We try to do that and, you know, the people just don't have any money. I mean, everybody's broke. I mean, they're being squeezed too by the, you know, all these other things, including, you know, filling their cars up, going to grocery and everything. So you know, some of us have increased our rents a little bit, but it's very, very difficult. I want you to know. For, for the commercial tenants that we have, like state government and things like that. I got a letter here. This is from the state of Kentucky in reference to a rental rate reduction request. They're at, they asked us on August 30th, 2010, to decrease our rents by 5%. So I mean, so again, our expenses are going up, where's the income? It's not going up, it's coming out of our pockets. So, you know, and then when the expenses keep going up, especially on commercial property, and your incomes go down, your cap rate goes down, and then your property values go down. So I, you know, I just want to know where it's going to end. I mean, this is, you know, we've, we've weathered a whole lot at this point. And, you know, I'm asking you commissioners to vote no for this runoff tax. And this comes from heart right here, I've been in this business a long time. So that's all I had to say.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Now, this is not meant to be, to put you on the spot, but we're going to have to find a way to fund that. So we, we only have certain options of which we're aware.
Right.
And I'm, you know, I'm, I want to hear from citizens if they have ideas that are more creative, that would sit better with the population than what we can come up with. Because we haven't come up with anything. Are we going to dip into the general fund? Are we going to cut back on services? We have to do something, so we don't have a lot of options of which we're aware. If there are other options out there that people could share with us about how to solve this problem, because it's not a commission problem, it's the citizens of Frankfurt problem as well. So I would like to hear any sort of creative idea that somebody might have. Otherwise, we've got just a couple of options. And neither one of them, or we've got about three options, and they're not, none of them are pleasant. So, and I'm not trying to pick on the spot right now, but.
It's not pleasant for us.
But if you have, like, any ideas that are alternatives, anybody has any ideas that are, please share it with the commission, help us figure out a better way to do it. Because we don't have any of those alternatives that were like, this definitely is great. You know, this is going to be the thing that's not going to really get, you know, people upset because all of those, none of those options are really great. But again, I know, I'm not asking you right now, but if you have ideas to share with us later or if you have any now, sharing with us alternatives.
I don't have any right this second, but I'm not prepared for that.
I know, I know you're not. But I'm just saying, if you have those or you know people that do to bring to us, I'd love to hear them. So I would have some other things to choose from.
Okay. I'm done, I'll set the tone here.
Thanks a lot.
Anybody else wants to speak?
Thanks.
Thank you, Richard.
I'd already told him I would.
I mean, I.
I had to actually pass, I was going to let them speak and then realized that the animal control folks were supposed to be an agenda and they just weren't listening, so I thought I'd just owe them that, so.
I was just like that. My, my name is Steven Snyder, I'm a, I'm a property owner here in Frankfurt also. And I, I'm concerned about the same thing as Richard is. What are the other options, Ms. Bowers? You said that you all had a couple of other options besides levying a new tax against everybody in Frankfurt.
Dipping into the general fund, which means there's less money available for other things. The funds have to come from somewhere. And one of the reasons that we were looking at that is because there is a lot of state property that's causing, that's contributing to the problem. But we citizens of Frankfurt are pay, are going to end up paying the full amount and they're not going to pay anything. So we were thinking this might be a more equitable way for everyone that contributes to the problem to share in the cost of it. But I'm willing to hear other ideas.
I understand that, but I don't think it's equitable. I mean, as a property owner, you know, I think people get the perception like, you've got tons of money. Oh, you're rich, you know, and, and, and you kind of get picked on as how you feel sometimes. And the fact of the matter is, that's just not the case. You know, I always say I'm an employee of Farmers Bank, you know, because that's basically what I am, with the payments I have and everything else.
Call me a guy.
But I, I just think there, you say equitable, and there are a few people that own more properties, obviously, you know, and my understanding is that, that the citizens like, that live in Indian Hills or something like that, they would be levying this tax also on their driveway? So, so, I mean, what if somebody's got a bigger driveway than their neighbor? I mean, how's that going to?
Well, we haven't, we haven't determined that. That's one of the, the details that we've got to do some more work on. Are we going to?
Yeah, it's really sticky though, that's going to become a big, big problem, you know, and there's.
It is a big, big problem. And that's why I'm saying, if anybody's got any ideas to bring to this board, I'm sure we would all love to hear them. Because we've spent, and you know, we were talking about this when I was on the commission years back. So that lets you know that it's not something real easy for us to do. We would love to find another way to do it. And I'm not saying that just believing that there is no way. I'm really asking, if you've got a better idea, we all want to know about it. And again, not to put you on the spot, but to let you kind of get a feel for how difficult a decision like this is to make. Because we really want to be fair, we want to be equitable, and we don't want to stick it to people when we don't have to and we're looking for a better way to do it.
I understand that, I do. But as I was talking to Mr. Commissioner Rowe, what is this $200,000 that is going to be voted? voted on for a study? Am I wrong here?
It's the agenda item under discussion.
Uh-huh. And what exactly does that constitute? I mean, why are they spending, are you gonna spend $200,000 to tell the board, you know, to taxes? I mean, is that basically what this boils down to?
I can speak about it now or wait till the agenda item, whatever.
Well, we're not usually like, if we can answer people's questions well there.
The engineer's proposal on the stormwater is to give us a final determination on the ERU, that's Equivalent Residential Unit. And the idea right now, but it's not been finalized, is that every residential property across the city would be charged the same fee. It's ranged from $4 to $5.60. That might be based on, say, a 3,500 square foot impervious service on the average residential. So, if that were the case, and that's the final number, that would be an ERU. Now, that ERU, then, would be used for commercial and industrial by dividing the impervious service of a commercial property, for example. Let's just say it's 70,000 square foot, let's say the average ERU is 3,500 square foot, so it's 20 times. If the fee ends up being $4, that's $80 a month. That's part of what the study is gonna tell us. The study's gonna, and, by the way, it's important for me to note, there currently is a $4 per meter fee for lateral improvements. The staff is gonna recommend that that be waived or eliminated in lieu of a stormwater fee. So, for residential, it'll be revenue neutral. Some of the other items we talked about, we need to complete calculations on commercial and industrial impervious service. And that's done with GIS and, by the way, impervious service is rooftops, it's driveways, it's parking lots, et cetera.
And would that be commercial property versus residential, it's gonna be the same tax rate?
Yes, if I'm understanding your question. For example, as I said, the ERU, the Equivalent Residential Unit, may end up being $4. It could be less.
Right.
It could be more. My guess is, it won't be more than $4, based on whatever, the past year that I've been working with this. So, that, let's just say, $4, that's not the number, but let's just say $4 per ERU. As I said, if you divide then, the commercial property by the average residential unit, say 3,500 square feet, then the amount of times 3,500 goes into your property is the amount of ERUs. So, as I said, 70,000 and 3,500 is 20, so that would be $80 per month, based on a $4 fee, which has yet to be determined. That's something that will be brought to the commission at a later date, I'm guessing by the end of the year.
One more quick question.
Yes, sir.
If I build a new...
Actually, I think I have two questions, then I have to stop, 'cause it's cross-examination if it goes moving too.
And I have not been watching the clock, because it's been a question and answer instead of just a single comment.
I have no idea, 'cause I told I wasn't gonna keep time, so I don't...
I can ask him what he wants to say, and then he can tell us if there's anything to ask him. Can you ask, can you ask me a question that you wanna...
You can ask somebody else.
For answer phone.
If I build a new house here in Frankfort, and I pour a concrete that lets the water leach through, am I gonna have, am I subject to that runoff tax?
No.
Do you?
Well, if I could address...
Oh.
But I might be with my roof eventually.
Yes, sir. The average, if it goes...
Commissioner Bowers, you wanna ask that question, City Manager?
I want the City Man, I said no, but I would rather...
Semi-pervious driveway or sidewalk would qualify as a, same ERU as a purchase.
You can't have a semi-pervious roof, I can't.
No.
That would...
You can't. You can't.
So, there you go.
Some people do.
I'm going to, I just have to allow the, our rules have to follow.
Well, what I, the answer is, cities ordinarily have one fee for residential, and that could be $3 across the board, that could be $4 for all residential, doesn't matter if you've got a two-acre lot or a quarter-acre lot, because oftentimes, the runoff is rather similar. So, in your case, for a residential, but if you were to build a commercial property and were to put in a commercial parking lot, then in that case, you can be given a credit for. And what the ordinance may include is an appeal process. So, when we, when the commercial impervious surface is determined for a particular piece of property, the owner can look at that number and say, well, that's not correct, because we have X amount of impervious surface, or whatever other options, and that would be dropped to the staff.
Thank you, yes.
My name is Mary Ann Hewlitt, and I'm a property manager of lots of square footage in Frankfort, which is primarily rented to the state. I have a building, one building, that's 110,000 square feet. That building has another building on it that's 65,000 square feet. I have four acres of parking lots. I also have a retention basin that I was forced to put in and lost about an acre of ground. I have drainage that goes to that retention basin. I followed all the rules, and now you wanna charge me for all of that space because the water runs off. I'm sorry, it's not right. I've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in property taxes. If I happen to make a little money in my business, I've got to pay you in a profits tax, which is just rawr.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But what I'm saying to you is, if you had put in the ordinance way back when you get this permeable black cotton stuff, which is also, I'm quite sure that's coming, and that everybody will have to do it, and if they can afford it, then God bless them, because it's extremely expensive, as I'm sure you all know. But, yes, the point I'm just trying to make is that we pay and we pay and we pay, and it just doesn't seem fair that we have to bear the burden.
Do you wanna ask, Mr. Hewlitt, you mind asking, if you ask, you can ask questions here?
I just wanna make the time, we've been making them all, while, been kinda like Q and A. I just, I just wanna say, I don't know if y'all are gonna be able to stay or not for when it's on the agenda. I'm, I agree with what y'all are saying. I don't believe it's fair, I don't believe it's equitable. I do believe we can find a way to pay for it without subjecting the community to stormwater utility fees. I do believe it's possible. I do think there are ideas, there are hard decisions, I don't doubt that at all, but I believe it is possible, and I don't think that we need to get, somebody somewhere has finally got to say, no more. And I'm willing to draw a line in the sand, no more.
Well, I rent that property to the state. The state is not gonna pay that tax.
No, they're not. You can't pass it on.
I cannot pass it on, any way, shape, or form. I'm lucky to get what I get.
They dropped their rates.
You know, they dropped their rates, and then when somebody suggested they bring it back up, they said, the attorney said...
Just move.
No, that would be a rent increase, and it would all have to be ever passed and rebid.
So, you just leave it.
Nobody asked, but, or anything, when they tried to, when they reduced it. I mean, they just did it arbitrarily. It's hard, believe me.
Do you have anything else to discuss? Do you have some more time?
No.
All right, well, thank you so much.
What I was wondering is, why they are assuming, I mean, why are they assuming all of this water runoff is going in the sewer? I like to water my burning bushes and things, I don't wanna have to pay the ridiculous water fees, so I have had installed, there are underground pipes attached to every downspout I have, I have great gutters, oversized gutters, downspouts, and they all go underground wherever my bushes and landscaping is, and that's where all the water goes. It's not going in your sewer, it's going to water my bushes and my trees, flower beds, and it's all underground and concealed, so that's not going in your sewer. I'm not quite sure why I should be paying the sewer fee for that. And then apartment buildings that have these large parking lots that were required to have for off-street parking, that I've owned for 37 years, I mean, I can't even, I'm sitting here trying to do the math of the numbers he was providing and thinking, oh my God, I mean, what am I gonna do? I mean, I better just grind up all that concrete and have gravel parking lots, and then, you know, which is gonna look really great, but at least the water would be going through to the ground, so that you couldn't charge me.
Well, Lexington, they do charge for that. They do charge for gravel.
Well, I'll go with dirt, whatever you think. But it's just, I mean, I don't want it to be as bad as the trash fee. When I first heard about the trash fee, I wasn't real thrilled, but I thought, I can live with my $5 a property. Then I find out that the landlords get charged that per unit, you know, so I have an apartment building, a lot smaller than my house sits on, I might have one single adult in each apartment, maybe a couple vacancies, I still have to pay four times what my neighbor does, you know, for trash fees. So, I mean, we're going really in the wrong direction, and landlords are just getting killed here. I mean, I just had my first rent increase, January 1st, in five years, because I am concerned about tenants. They don't have the money. And so, I've already lost two tenants because of the rent increase, and I don't think one rent increase in five years is really, you know, unreasonable.
Ms. Fisher, do you have anything? I think you still got time. I'm not keeping, I know that...
Can I, I have a short, other two minutes I just wanna talk about.
Absolutely.
Can I go on and tell you that, and then I can leave?
Sure, yeah. No, you have to stay there as long as we do. No.
I've spent the entire day on the phone. I started with Robbie Engel, who gave me to Doug Young, I've talked to somebody, who, then I went, Doug met me at the property, then I talked to Shermaine Maxwell, who sent me to Mark No, who's the complaint department for Public Works, who had me talk to his supervisor, and I got kinda... Bottom line is, everybody said that the city commission has set this rule that is really adversely affecting my life. I just, my printer was acting up, so I have two really bad pictures, but this is what I printed out, if you can pass those around. I have the misfortune of living across the two, across the street from the two worst four plexes on Chinook Trail. I'm doing my best to help that neighborhood. I have my house there for 32 years, I spent almost $200,000 improving my house, where people said, why don't you just sell that and move to the country club? And I'm like, no, I love this neighborhood, raised my kids here, I'm trying to help. When the house behind me went into foreclosure and looked horrible for two years, I bought it and fixed it up for my son to live in. I have, there's six apartment buildings across from my house, I own four of them. The two worst ones that are in this picture are right in between the four I own. I have the apartments, two buildings on either side of those two, I have the two houses across the street, I have a building behind those. That's what I'm looking at. Now, this happens to be this week, but I've been through this a dozen times with this particular property. And what it comes down to, the city says, I have to look at that, because your rule says, that even if it's an out-of-town landlord, that they have to contact the landlord, give him five days to fix the problem, then if he doesn't, I guess they contact him again, then they will have Public Works come out and pick up all that mess and charge him $25. You know, I almost paid the $25 myself today, just to get you to deal with the situation. I have a vacant apartment that I bought, I had three great prospects this weekend. One of the pictures shows a building on the left-hand side with a white deck, that's the nicest building on the street, that's mine. And I had three people that, when they saw that other building, thought, I don't think so. They just didn't wanna live in a gap, you can keep those, I don't need those. They just didn't wanna live in a slimy-looking area. And this is my entire livelihood, so I just think you need to change something. Everyone's told me they can't do anything unless you change the rule. I think at least out-of-town landlords, you should have a different, you should have something clause where the city can help me deal with this mess, and then you bill them, bill them $100, $25 is ridiculous. But do something to help us with these out-of-town landlords that don't care. I mean, it's just, I have spent, just in 2012, I spent $50,000 per building for three buildings on that street, new roofs, new siding, new windows, new front doors, gutters, downspouts. You can, I mean, Robbie can vouch for that, he's come out and looked at them, and they're gorgeous. And, but then, right in the middle of my five buildings are those two that I gave you the pictures of.
Thank you, City Attorney.
I mean, we even spent five days picking, every time the wind blows, all that trash that I'm showing you, that's probably 15, 20 feet long and about three or four feet high, it's blowing all over the neighborhood, which means it's my property, because I own all the property around that building.
City Attorney's gonna, do you have those organs in front of you, or some...
That's what I'm looking at.
Sorry, I didn't...
It's just incredibly frustrating, I spent the entire day working on this problem.
And I've gotten some calls related to that from other citizens in your area, so I know there are other people in the neighborhood that are concerned about...
Well, I do wanna say, Robbie immediately had Doug Young come out and meet me. Doug was wonderful, showed up on time, took photos, he's already sent the owner a letter, he called him today. The owner said that he was gonna try to get it cleaned up, and then because he's out of town, he asked for a two-week extension, which Doug gave him.
Whoa.
So, I'm just, you know, the Public Works says they can't do anything, because they have to allow the owner the five days. So, I've already put up with this for five days. Now, they're gonna send him a letter today that he'll get in a few days, and then he has five days to take care of this, and then if he doesn't, I don't know what the next step is. But the city cleaning it up and charging him $25, I think is ridiculous.
But ordinances...
Under the ordinance, you can either treat them as Ms. Fisher's indicated, where you give them five days, and if they don't pick it up, then you, we pick it up and charge them $25. But according to Section 50.13(c), the violator can be cited to the Franklin District Court, and if they're cited to the Franklin District Court, it will constitute a criminal offense for which a citation may be, may issue with a fine of not less than $50 nor more than $500, or imprisonment for a term not to exceed 30 days, or both the fine and imprisonment. So, you have a, you've got an option there. You can either send them the notice, and then give them five days, and if they don't pick it up, then at that point, you can cite them. Or, I would think in this case, where they've done it...
Well, the problem is, the owners live out of town, so they don't know what the tenants are doing. And the problem is, the city doesn't know what the tenants are doing either, because I have all the tenants' paper on electric service. I believe you checked Robbie for me, and he had, the owners, they found a loophole here. They keep all the electric in their name, then the city doesn't know that they have tenants moving in every two or three weeks, because the apartments are so horrible, some people last three days and they move out, some last three months and they move out. City doesn't know when they move out, unless they get an anonymous call from me, because there's no way to tell, because the owner never changes the electric service.
I think we closed that loophole, didn't we?
Just, just so you all understand too, if we have an out, an out-of-town landlord, the district court will not serve any papers on them. So, if we take them to district court and they don't live in Franklin County, it's dead in the water.
Yeah, Rick Sparks is not gonna do that.
So, we have to, at that point, we have to back up, figure out how we can go around. And I will have to say myself, if I, if I have something, I can call Public Works and say, look, we've got something here, we need to get cleaned up, and they'll send somebody out there usually to pick it up. But there is times when that's just not feasible. And this one this morning, with them being an out-of-town landlord, it's hard for us to take any more action than what we've actually done this morning.
And just to correct what I said too, is, if it's, if you're dealing with dangerous waste, and this probably doesn't have anything dangerous in it, you can cite them for a criminal offense, but if it's not dangerous waste, then you can cite them to the Board of Code Enforcement, where you have the $50 to $500 penalty amounts that can be imposed. It's not a perfect solution, but it is there.
I would like to see the city, especially since, like, these two buildings, I mean, if a miracle happens and I can save enough money, I'm going to ask those people if they'll sell me those buildings, I was, you know, because then, I don't want any more apartments, but I would buy them, just to rehab them and make them decent. But, you know, if they at least had a different policy for out-of-town owners. Let the city clean it up, and the city send them a bill, and it should be more than $25.
How old is that ordinance that says $25? Is that an old, old ordinance?
No, that was in 2012. Just real quick, the, the challenge is really greater than that, to be frank with you, Ms. Fisher. And the challenge is, is people don't pay their fines to us by and large. If, if you look at property maintenance code fees, et cetera, and off the top of my head, we either got one or, one or two, I think we got two cents on the dollar year before last, and this last year, we might have got ten cents on the dollar. So, we got one problem, which is the fine is so low that nobody's gonna worry about it. And the second problem is, when they get fined, they're not gonna pay it. So, so if you, if we as a commission are concerned about this, then, then I think you would look at whether or not making the fine larger. And there are ramifications, if you make it larger, there's another side to the story. But, and then the other thing is, is to move toward more punitive actions much quicker in order to get the money. Because people that are used to this stuff and doing the wrong thing, well, they just start laughing when they get these fines because they're not gonna pay it.
Well, then I suggest you have a substantial fine, and if they don't pay, don't argue with them because they are gonna ignore you, and you put a, you have it in your ordinance where you can put a lien on their property. Because these two particular properties, in the thirty-two years I've lived across the street, have probably had five owners. So, they are going to eventually milk the building for every penny they can get, and they're gonna try to sell them. And then there would be a lien on the property where no one could get clear title until that was paid.
Well, see, that's, that's why we just changed our ordinance, so that our nuisance code lien will take priority except for taxes, whereas a property code maintenance lien always came down at the bottom, and therefore, when the houses were sold at the foreclosure auction or whatever, there was not enough money to go around.
So, we're doing better, but it's got a ways to go.
I think we've gone-
Well, I just would like you to see how frustrating it is for those of us that-
We're eleven minutes, right?
Have put everything we have into our property and are trying to help the neighborhood.
That's the first time.
Oh, your first, okay.
I don't think that we did.
Who is this?
I'm the Public Works Director.
What's your name?
Tom Bradley.
Oh, no, I talked to Byron somebody and who, who I was referred to by Mark Noe.
Byron is the foreman.
Okay, talked to Mark. Charmaine hooked me up with Mark. Mark hooked me up with Byron. Everybody said the same thing. Can't touch the trash until we send them their letter, and they have five days to clean it up.
I think, if I may, when, when the ordinance was written, there was some concern from the commissioners when it was written that, and from some of the property owners, that they were afraid, what if my tenant does this and I'm out of town for the weekend?
There's a whole nother argument.
And, or I'm out of town on vacation, my tenant does that, I'm gonna get fined for something that had I been there, I might have been able to control. So, there was a group of property owners making that argument as well.
Well, this particular property, I've been through this, I can't even tell you many times. This picture could be six months ago, last summer. I mean, it's the same thing. It's just, I've done everything I can to separate myself from this property. See those black fences? On the other side of the fence. You know, the, I mean, I've got, I've put those horse farm fences around all the property. You know, I've rented nice people. I don't care if they drive the garbage truck or work for Governor Bishir. I just want people to courteous, respect property, honest, obey laws. And this is just unacceptable. I mean, I pay my property taxes, they're all paid. I never thought I would find a property on my street worse than what used to be Indian Hills Apartments that this, this is, this is. Because the people from Indian Hills Apartments, what used to be that, are really making a difference to deal with that.
Which is good news, because that was really tough. I know our folks have got it. We'll take, the Code Enforcement Board, Nuisance Board.
You can have the photos, and I've already emailed them to Robbie and Charmaine and-
It's in this, it'll be in the-
They have better copies. My printer didn't make good copies.
There's a letter mailed today.
I mean, Code Enforcement and Public Works both said their hands were tied because of how your city ordinance is working.
Yeah, they can enforce what- They can't make, the changes to whatever ordinance that they have to enforce it.
But when you have the same property that comes up again and again and again, there should be some kind of relief for the neighbors.
We all agree, and that's-
And they rent to such bad people, I guess that's a polite way to put it, that my son was really concerned about me being out there taking pictures this morning and meeting with Code Enforcement, because he said he didn't want them to promote and key all of his vehicles tonight, you know, so. But, you know, what am I gonna do if I can-
Well, thanks for your great turn. Tim and then Greg, I didn't see you.
Tim Nixon, I brought part of this issue up as the Public Register. He was partially remembering some of the things that I said when the ordinance was being brought up. And that, you know, I'm not trying, I'm not gonna try to take up for this absentee owner, but that gentleman had nothing to do with earning the money, buying the goods, or putting those goods out there. The people you need to get after are the people that put the stuff out there. The rest, and therefore, the response was, well, we can't enforce that because we don't know who put it out there. Well, I guarantee you, it wasn't this lady's tenants, it was the people who live right there who did it. You need to get, figure out a way to get after the person who does the violation. These people here have zero intention on ever changing their ways. And until you make, change somebody's attitude, and it doesn't matter what we're talking about, here we go, cross humanity. You're a psychologist, you know this sociologist psychologist. If you don't change somebody's way of thought, it's never gonna change. And this is where we have to start. Start the basics and you move up. Hold somebody accountable for what they did.
Good point.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see you sit down with anybody. I got it.
Back to stormwater. I'm Greg Meyer. I've lived here most of my life. And, you know, one suggestion I'd give is we stop building these big tunnels. I don't know how many more we gotta build. We spent a lot of money on big storm drain tunnels. Maybe there's five or six more that need to be built. But I guess I would like to know how many, how much damage has been done by stormwater the last five years? Is it millions? Is it hundreds of thousands? I, I don't have any idea. Tom might know. But, that's just my thoughts. In the Kentucky River, the damage from that, that's, you know, that drains all the way from eastern Kentucky. That's something we can't really control, or, you know, big streams like Elkhorn Creek, that, you know, that's Lexington, Scott County. Maybe we wanna do our part. And to me, I'd at least like to know, is it the EPA that's doing this? I mean, is that, is that why we're having the more storm water?
Well, they're the ones that sent the letters to public governments around the country, you know, phase, different phases, phase two, phase one. It's been, we talked about, I think it's been brought up here, this is the fourth time. In previous times, it never, it never even got to discussion level because there wasn't support. And with the, I don't want to say the red hanging over the local head, but Division of Water and U.S. EPA, the ones that are sending down unfunded mandates, if you want to call them, to, for communities. One person even said so far that if, as elected officials, if elected officials at the local level do not address it, that those elected officials who refuse to do so could be forced out of office or put in jail. Now, I don't know if they would really do that or not, but-
We don't want to fund it.
That's all right.
Maybe, maybe Tom can speak to the-
How are the tunnels, to that issue? I mean, that's, that's about probably what, twelve, fifteen million dollars worth of-
The tunnels were funded, my understanding. I wasn't here at the tunnel.
Which one are you talking about?
The east, east tunnel, or the west end tunnel, you know, one of the tanks.
Oh, yeah, we did those, we bonded.
Right.
That's an option, sir. What, funding?
What, can you kind of explain, Greg, about the MS four plan and what the-
You got, you got two, two sides to the coin, so to speak. You have the MS four, which is the municipal separate storm sewer system. And we are mandated by the state, who is mandated by the EPA. These, these are the rules. This is what you have to do. And part of that ruling says you have to figure out a way to fund it, and you have to tell us how you want to fund it. It could be from the general fund, it could be from some other means, but you have to tell us how you want to fund it. But they give us a series of things that we have to do. And we have to stay in compliance with that. And as government often does, it increases over time the more things that we have to do. So, that's part of what we're looking at this money for, is to fund these things that we have to do. The other side of it is for capital improvement projects. And these are projects that, you know, your neighbors, people around town are dealing with stormwater issues, with storm sewer systems that are inadequate, they're fifty years old. A lot of these drain into the ground, into groundwater. And when it rains a lot, that groundwater gets full, and water has no place to go. That compounded with the fact that, as Bill, with his sewer program, is trying to keep all this water out of his sewer system because he doesn't want to get to the plant where he has to pay to treat it, or we don't want it to run over in a sewer overflow and get into the public waterway. He's mandated by the government to keep all excess water that's not sewage out of his system as much as possible. Well, that has to have someplace to go. And so, as he tightens up his sewer system, that's where the water has got to go somewhere. And the infrastructure's not there. Years ago, when, when subdivisions were built, they didn't build them to the standards that we build them to now. And we've got to have funding set aside to build that infrastructure. And that's the, that's the same-
How much damage has been done the last five years, like physical damage from flash floods or storms?
I, I don't have that number. I've, I know-
That would be something I'd like to know. We're gonna spend thirty, forty million dollars.
The west side of town, we knew the houses that would get flooded inside their basements, inside their living spaces, and then just inside their perimeter, like, like if a damage landscaping. People who had property damage inside their living area were prioritized. And we had that information at some point. That's been ten, twelve years ago since that was looked at because the west side issue was, was addressed.
And there's, there's a whole couple of neighborhoods. There's one whole neighborhood on the east side that it's just, people's front yards is, is like this. I mean, and, and then Bell points another one, and I can't remember the name of the neighborhood. But there are neighborhoods in our city where people really suffer when we get huge rains. I've walked in their yards. I've, I've ruined my shoes. I've seen the water just pouring into the house, and their pumps trying to pump it out as quickly as they can, but they can't stay in the home. So, but I mean, we don't have a number on that because those are private properties.
Well, we, we, we have fixed a lot. Home Street is far better than it ever, than it's ever been in that area. And we have fixed a lot. There has been no rigorous cost-benefit analysis as far as what, you know, what, what the costs have been, and then what we, what benefits we've gained. And it's really hard to do. I, I asked for something, and Tom put together a general one. But it's, it's really hard to do. I'm not saying it can't be done, but it is hard to do, and that's something.
We'll try to get something for you.
I think just one other suggestion is buying houses that are floodgrown and tearing them down, making green areas might be cheaper than, you know, building a tunnel or, you know, buying ten of them. But, you know, it's just a plus you're adding, you're taking away the runoff for, you know, that, that area, reducing it.
It'd be cheaper than the tunnel, wouldn't it?
The city did buy some house that has bought-
These aren't two hundred?
I don't know. I don't think there's any tunnels planned.
No, there's no more tunnels.
Just real quick, though, we're, we're talking about what the EPA is living, the toxic runoff. The flooding that occurs in the EPA, we're two different things here we're dealing with, right?
Just plain water.
Just plain water.
And then, if y'all, I don't know if you're gonna be able to stick around the storm water, there's gonna be a discussion after citizen comments. If y'all want to stay for that, I don't know if it's gonna, it's not gonna be a PowerPoint presentation, but... Does anybody else have any citizen comments? Were you through?
I'm done.
Thank you, everybody. If anyone has biggest, had a chance.
Okay.
Then we'll move on. Stormwater utility proposal, I'm just gonna make that.
Well, I was gonna just give you a little short discussion, much of what I already mentioned about if there's $193,000-
Thank you all for coming.
Not to exceed, studying, we're trying to get some-
Thank you.
Trying to get some direction from the commission as to whether or not they proceed. Tonight's not a voting meeting, so all we can do is discuss. But if there is consensus, it will be placed on our next commission voting meeting, which is April 21. I think I've already gone through what the study will do. There are a few other things that I didn't mention. It will help us determine a billing process. It will help with a public education process. There will be a final report and recommendation to the commission and/or the county, because this was began, or begun initially with the county as well. This started in April of 2011. I think it's at least important to note that our staff has come up with approximately five to six million dollars of stormwater work that can be done in our community. The question really is, and that probably will be exacerbated as, as Director Scal tries to remove stormwater from the sanitary system, that water's gonna have to have a place to go. The question for the commission is, how do you want to address it? We can reduce expenses, or we can take the funds out of the general fund, or some sort of combination of both. We have property tax, which is paid by approximately sixty percent or so of the properties within our community. We have the occupational tax, and we have the insurance premium tax. So, you have the revenue options, and then you have budget reductions. So, I don't know. We have Mr. Steve McKinley here and John Demucco. Steve's from URS. I don't know if you have any comments about the study. Director Scal, Public Works Director Bradley may have other information as well.
And just for those that, if this is your first time meeting, once we get into this discussion, we don't take any more citizen comments. So, if you do have questions about anything that you hear tonight, you can submit those, you can call one of us, or you can send us an email, or catch us after the meeting, and we'll, we'll get whatever information anybody wants. We can even get copies of whatever proposals we're gonna see tonight if anybody's interested in that, that spoke for or against any of these things. Yeah, what?
I think it's important that you understand just how pervasive these EPA standards are. EPA through, through history has started with wastewater and wastewater plants. It's all part of the Clean Water Act. What we're talking about is not a separate issue from the Clean Water Act. It's all part of the original 1972 Clean Water Act. Then they came upon us with the combined sewer issues that Bill is dealing with right now on a daily basis. And you've heard him say that whenever he goes in the neighborhood and says, I want to make a change here, we've got to go in and tighten up these sewers. The question he inevitably gets is, well, are you gonna also handle my stormwater problem because my yard's flooding, maybe my home is flooding? And his answer has to be, I'm going to make it worse because I'm removing stormwater by EPA standards out of the sanitary sewer. So, it's increasing, the, the problem is not gonna decrease of flooding, it's gonna increase. The EPA mandate is for water quality, but it's hard to separate the quality from the quantity. And the program that we're getting ready to, that we're thinking about here will involve both. Keep in mind, you live on a river, which also includes the maintenance of a flood protection system, which is gates and pumps and flood walls and all of those types of things. So, there is a huge infrastructure here that has to be taken care of. And the EPA regs are there to say, you, now, in addition to all that, you cannot put any substance into the, into a, a storm sewer, or into a river, or into a lake, or into any of the local waters that is not stormwater. And if you do, you're in violation. And those are the things that we've been trying to address with the, the plan that we've done up to this point, and will continue along with the plan that we have made.
Tom, ready to take questions if anybody's got questions?
Just our folks will know that there is a law, there is a law- Just to folks from the, there was a law, there was a presentation a few months back that was at the library that was open to the public. I know not everybody sees those, so that's why this is a more abbreviated version, well, much abbreviated compared to what that meeting was. And I think that meeting is available, I don't know if it's on our website, or if it would be something that folks could get a copy from Cable Ten. I know they were there, I don't, I haven't seen the quality of the video to know if it's something that you'd be interested in. But, um, we ain't doing any more citizen comments, but we, we might be able to, when we get to the end, if the commission, we can always move back into it, but, um, anything else from our side? Commissioners, have any questions, comments?
Maybe I'll go, why is-
And just to, back to the, this is not going to be like the big, long discussion or presentation that we had with the joint-
Two hundred grand?
Yeah. No, it's like the, the presentation, this, the time, and the amount of information that was shared, the joint city-county meeting back at the library. Any other commissioners have any comments or questions about, about Commissioner Rock said he had?
So, based on Tom and Bill, and I guess we're off, based, and it sounds like this, the answer is yes. Based on a comprehensive legal and regulatory analysis, we have to have a plan, and we have to fund it, there is some, I assume some wiggle room in what is funded. Is that correct?
The, the current ordinance that we're under says that we have to tell the state how we're funding.
Got that part, I mean, I'm saying what-
It, it doesn't tell us how we fund it.
I mean, it doesn't tell us what to fund either, does it?
We have to fund our MS four program.
Right. But is there any gray area in what is in the MS four program? In other words, let's say there's forty-two projects that need to be done in the next twenty years, can you do twenty-eight of them and still be all right?
The MS four project, the MS four part, does it say X number of projects? It says you have to do something, and it gives you a list of how to address stormwater quality.
Yes, sir.
And it's quality only. That's what the MS four looks at. And so on the other side is the quantity, which is the amount of water. The MS four doesn't look, it doesn't mandate quantity to us. Is that, is that fair to say, Steve?
So the-
So I will say this, there are some things that are tied together in that, one of the things you have to do is maintain the system that you have.
Right.
Underneath the permit, you're maintaining it for water quality, but it just so happens if there's something that's blocking a drain, and it's causing water to back up, or causing pollutants to be in that system, you've got to clear it out. So maintenance is a key portion of what the permit asks for.
Are we not doing that already?
We're working to maintain the system. Okay. So we choose projects then that we think can best fulfill that mandate?
You're talking about if the capital improvement projects are funded?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And new projects?
Yes.
Which would be capital improvement, okay, got it.
Because we don't fund any right now, because there's no money that is-
I'm with you, I'm with you.
I don't think, I don't think that you can have a flooding situation and not affect the water quality. Is that correct? Because we have to look at not only oils and metals and issues like that, we have to look at sedimentation, we have to, you know-
Well, do you think it would be wise, which I've asked this question before, and it looks like it's just a real time problem, and I think Greg Meyer asked it tonight too, and that is, is there any merit to doing a comprehensive cost benefit analysis on projects that we identify to do to make sure that we, what we are doing make, both fulfills what we want to do, makes economic sense? So like, for example, if it's three houses that are being flooded, and the project's four hundred thousand, the houses are worth a hundred and eighty, does that make sense to do? Or would it make more sense to buy the houses and tear them down?
I guess the people have to do it themselves, but-
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to sell mine either, I understand that.
I would think that the time to do that-
You can buy mine, I still get the plan.
We might be able to do that, in a case-by-case basis.
That's what I'm saying.
But I don't know that we can project five years from now.
Right. But I guess what I'm saying is, it, it seems to me to make sense to do a pretty good cost benefit analysis on the projects we're going to do, just to make sure, and it may be easy, you just look at it and say, there's no way that we're impacting all of these houses, and we're only spending four hundred thousand dollars, and it's, you know, ten million dollars worth of property, so it makes sense. But I would think that that would make a good, make sense to do, so that we don't end up spending more on a problem that would be cheaper to just get rid of it as a problem.
And that may be part of it, but you still have to fund-
I understand.
-the value of the house.
Just asking. Another question, does anybody have any sense of where the county is on this?
No, but only if it's two, they're districts, is that correct?
It would be-
At this point?
The, there's part of the county that is within the MS four area. They have their own MS four program, or co-permittees. So it's within, I don't have any districts-
I don't know either. There's two primary areas, one is in one twenty-seven south, and the other one's out of Georgetown, but I do know there's some other spot areas around the, the city limits, it's based on population density. So I don't know that I could, be off the top of your head, which magistrate districts are involved? I don't.
One and two, is it?
I thought it involved more than just two.
I would think it was more than two, but I'm not sure it's all of them, but I think it's more than two of them.
I thought it was maybe all of them except two, frankly.
So three?
It's not in the very rural portion of the county.
Right.
It's in a strip of land that forms a crescent around the city, and the reason for that is EPA said, when there's a population center like Frankfurt, we're going to look at the density within the county, not the whole county, and we're going to take the highest density part that's adjacent to the city, and they will have their own permit. And this, the county has a phase-two permit also, but they work in cooperation with the city right now, they're called a co-permit-
Should be next.
Could I ask one question? I just want to make sure I understand, is we have certain areas in Frankfurt and Franklin County that flood, that have more flood problems, others than not. Would it be cheaper to take your other ones that flood? You know, it's something we're doing this big thing, and maybe because we have to. I've only had, the only thing I know about is what's been presented, it's presented very well. It appears, and I'm just, want to make sure I'm clear, this whole thing, you know, and maybe I'm confusing the floodwater thing, because the floods, you know, doesn't happen every day, or every month, but when it happens, we know where it hits hardest, but for us to prevent that, we have to do all of them, is that correct? There's ranch down the hill.
Again, there's the, there's the MS four part, which is the parts of Frankfurt that are not combined sewer. And we have, that area, we're responsible for the water quality. Now, when you go to the other side, which is the capital improvements part, which is-
List of projects.
The list of projects, it may not be flooding in the sense of, uh, two creeks, you know, coming up and flooding, that's another mechanic, but, but it may be the sense of the stormwater's getting into Bill's sewer, and it's, you know, shooting up through people's basements. Well, as he goes in and tightens that up, now the water's on the street, and maybe it's flooding the street, you know, there's issues there too.
Plus it causes sanitary sewer overflows, which is somewhat out of line for what exists there. So the conclusion we've come to that we've got to do something, right? Where we, in other words, there is, doesn't appear to be a choice to not do something. I don't think you could ignore it. Okay, that's, that's kind of where, where I was going, I think everybody was already there. But, so it appears to me if you have to do that, that, you know, I don't think we should support this two hundred thousand dollars for this study, I think we should pay it out of general, general money. We've doubled occupational taxes since two thousand, we went from one percent to one point nine five percent. We've got the second highest sewer rates in the state of Kentucky. We have no longer had the state as an engine of economic growth. We've had state and county school system, the city school system's gone seven or eight years with really nothing. Some of the state agencies have been cut twenty, and twenty-five, and thirty percent. Business activity is stagnant in this town, and if, and at the same token, we then want to put another fee or tax, whatever you want to call it, fee on business, which is going to retard business activity and hurt the economy. I think we need to fund it with our current budget, and it would take one point five percent in cuts for next year, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget, and take one point five percent for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen budget, to start this stuff in the summer of two thousand fifteen, which is when we were planning on starting it anyway. Because our budget is, Steve knows the bear and I do, it's about thirty-three, thirty-four million dollars, give or take, so it's one and a half percent, and another one and a half percent gets you to about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, I know those are hard decisions, but I don't believe for a moment that we can't cut up one and a half percent each year, and do it in things that are recurring, so that we set it aside, and then we have it for the future. But now that'll take hard choices, I know that, but I'm not, I believe we can make those choices and do it. That's my fifty cents.
I agree with you. We also have like the highest poverty rate in this region, and I hate to see another fee go, go toward people here. And if we can do it out of our general fund at this point in time, I would like to do that.
Any other commissioners want to come in?
We're going to discuss the budget in a minute, and so it appears that that would be one of the things that we would have to look at, because that would impact that. And, you know, it's kind of strange, because part of the thing, I definitely, from, from what I've heard, I really do think it's businesses, property owners, and I haven't even heard from, well, I'm not going to hear from the state, I know they're going to, you know, but that's the largest portion. I did like that it was going to be revenue neutral for the residents, and so some of the things I did like, I've not looked at it close enough to see, well, one point five million, because it's not, you know, I've looked at the budget cards, and I saw some monies that can be used. I don't know, right now I'm just, it's not a non-support, there's no others that-
I understand that, it's a hard choice.
Yeah.
Maybe something we look, look at further.
Is there any discussion on the stormwater? If not, then we'll be discussing it again under the, under the budget. All right. Next item is the state shuttle bus, thank you. I think we got a, we had an email on that already, so we're just waiting to get more information on the second, whether or not the second vehicle will be able to be operational.
I can give an update if you please, and I guess, I'm looking for direction. Is this is something that is okay with the commission? If so, we'll probably be bringing a contract to you, hopefully on April twenty-one. There's a meeting tomorrow morning at ten AM, April twenty-one is moving very, very quickly. However, the state wants to begin, I think by May twelve, and the program would run through the end of August, is what we're told, we'll learn more information tomorrow. So this thing is moving very quickly.
I think so.
There would be no costs to the city, all the no costs-
Yeah, I thought it was going to be no costs.
There will be no costs to the city, those costs will be picked up, no more after tomorrow's meeting, we have a ten o'clock meeting tomorrow.
Basically us helping them.
That's correct. They've approached us about leaving people from one hundred and two hundred barrel slang across the street, and, and from across the street back, because the parking lot is going to be occupied by the distribution center that Buffalo Trace is going to be building. So we're looking to partner with the state to lend some assistance.
If there's no objections?
Thank you.
And that's my community relations manager and-
He's our director. Yes.
I've passed out some job descriptions. I'd like to introduce the concept of a new position with the city of Frankfurt. It would be an enlargement of an existing position, the county has an alcohol and appliance community position, and this position, if approved by the commission, would include all of her current role, and then add responsibilities around community relations, improving our communications with the city of Frankfurt. So Rebecca would be handling newsletters, community surveys, as she's already done, website, social media, press releases, items like that. The concept would be having one point person and kind of centralizing communication as they extend out to the general public or to the media.
Question, so let the commissioners go first.
I think-
This is, I just wanted to be clear, because I, I got your email as I was reading my office. And I was wondering, this, this is just adding duties to a current position and changing-
The title.
The title.
The title on the grade, that's correct.
Because what I had seen, something about, like I said, the journalism market that when it had, those were the new parts you were adding, I didn't know if it was supposed to be geared towards more of a spokesperson, high person, that we, we want somebody with radio, television, or journalism background, or public affairs, that's what I wanted to-
Things that we're looking for, that kind of background, but not necessarily that Rebecca would be the, that interview spokesperson face. I think Rebecca, jump in if you're envisioning the role differently than, than I communicated, but I think it would be more, she's kind of the behind the scenes, putting the content together, and then funneling it onto that appropriate point person, depending on what the situation is, whether it be with the police, whether it be with emergency management by department and so forth.
Because they already have-
Would that be correct?
The police department has, that was the thing, when you start getting into those specialized areas, it could be, I don't know, chiefs, and we used to have a PIO in the fire department, too.
Well, I mean, we do our own Facebook, and we do a lot of our different things out. I, I would, I would assume that this would be something for, you know, for within city hall kind of, kind of stuff.
That's why, that's definitely just a question.
I mean, I don't know.
As I understood the concept, it would be more to tie all of the city departments together, to unify them, not really just city hall communication, as, as I've understood it.
It would avoid, I assume this would be a way to avoid silos.
That, that's the intent.
Right. And so they would work along with the police, or whoever, in order to facilitate the most effective communication.
Yes.
I guess, are we, we're trying, is the intent to throw this into the, change in the new budget year, or just change the position as soon as it can be changed, or is it just for discussion purposes?
This is really for discussion purposes, because it's going before the commission, so the commission, of course, has the, the right to approve or deny it. If it were approved, then I would think that it would go into place, it would take a couple readings to, to go through the commission, and then I think it would be, go into place if it became effective, which would be shortly before the new budget year.
Mayor, is there, I know you're a little fuzzy on the working interrelationship between that and, and police, but I think we could probably, maybe there's a way to make sure that's worked out, because I do think this has a lot of merit. It makes a lot of sense, Rebecca's excellent, and, and we don't really have that piece, so maybe there can be a way to deal with the, that fuzzy area between that and the police department.
I mean, I'd love her to come out at three in the morning when the press is calling this.
Well, I thought you would, yeah. I would have thought you would.
I'm sure Eddie would appreciate it on all these-
No, so I think, so I think, I think that could be dealt with.
There's, I guess the concern, just, this, this isn't going to be like the- There's, I guess the concern, just, this, this isn't going to be like the person that would be, this is just to help a department, for example, if it's a police issue or a fire issue or a public works issue or, I'm trying to think who else would be the, well, sewer backup or something. This person would just say, I will help that department pull information together?
That's actually what I thought. I did not think that she would be out at 3:00 AM. I actually wasn't thinking that was the intent. I thought that it would be more, this situation has occurred, people are busy tending to the situation, she's now helping to put pieces together to feed content that may be appropriate to send to the press or whatnot.
I think we can, I think we're probably going to want to control like public safety things pretty tightly because of investigations and also for the fear that what we say and how we say it and who says it is a big part of government communicating during times of crisis or, say there's a, I'm trying to think, a murder, they're going to get inundated.
Well, but that's not, that's not what, she's...
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, that's a good question.
That's what I'm just trying to figure out because I just saw...
But she's, she's under general administrative direction, so she's going to, they're going to be able to put the, make sure those things, but, but you know, she directs information for the city of Frankfurt to be a first of the jump up media outlet, so I can see where you're concerned, including drafting, press releases, promotion of city services, events and activities and actually liaison between city and associated agencies. So I think with reasonable oversight, I got a feeling she's not wanting to send out a murder release anyway.
A perfect example may be the article I was in today's paper about the ISO rating. Guess who helped us draft it?
We need some, we need some positive promotion.
That's the goal.
Well, for me, if we're going to get to that point, then I would rather have a person that worked in a media outlet, that's been an on-camera person. I mean, when we talked about this years back, Commissioner...
We talked about this a lot.
We wanted this position, but the only problem is, and then if this was going to create a new position, if we're cutting a police officer and a firefighter and then we're going to bring in a new position, that was my other concern too, is I don't want to create a new position when we're cutting others. So that was, and again, I just saw this...
Today.
Today, whenever you sent that out for like five minutes, then I had to run.
So it wouldn't be a new position, but it would be an enlargement of an existing position designed to meet any of the city has in terms of improvements.
And this is an inexpensive, what needs that need because we're adding duties to somebody, giving them, I don't want to get to the exact numbers, but we're not giving them a lot of money just to take on these additional duties.
Well... I don't know, just, we're not, we have to, we're not going to...
No, it's not a vote introducing the position.
So we'll be on the next agenda?
Yes. Well, there'll be a first reading of this job title on the voting session next week. The job title exists.
That'll give us all time to study it since it sounds like we're on several different pages.
I just want to clarify what Kathy is saying is that we don't anticipate a person to be on camera to replace the mayor, to replace the police chief or whatever.
I was more worried about the department level because I know...
We simply want this position to assist Chief Sloan or Chief Willhoy or Public Works Director to start developing more positive projects or articles, media about what we're doing. And we do a lot of many, many good things. I think Seth is, is working to help us out, but we want to do as much as we can. We just think it's important to get some of the good things out. That's the goal of the position, is not to take anybody's place.
Maybe if that employee, you saved a woman's life in public works or possibly it just kind of went under the radar, that would be an opportunity to get some recognition for that.
Are we changing the pay scale? Because I don't know what the current...
Our scales would stay the same, but the existing job is, as a grants manager, is a grade 84 and this is currently set at a grade 88.
That's why I didn't, I didn't know if the current... I just have, I just have issues with when we gave other people additional duties and they didn't get pay increases. And an example has been back years ago, Commissioner Bowles remembered this, with our previous dispatch communications division going back, I guess probably four directors back, just had issues with the pay scale. I'm just real sensitive and we've got, we've got telecommunications now in the E91 one center that are now going to be...
Making less than...
Making less than other, these are trained telecommunications, they're not just, they are tel, actual telecommunications that had to go to the academy to learn to do that and they're on call 24/7. And I, I'm just looking at all that and what it does to, and this is a history and they'll tell you, when we've had other positions like this in the past, I've always had concerns about what that does to...
Across the board.
The morale of the others when they see, oh, you just gave, you've cut a firefighter, you've cut a police officer, you've cut a person in IT, or the other, and then we...
To and park.
To and park. And nothing against the current person in, that would have, that's not it at all, it's just being sensitive for making cuts. I don't see how we can pick and choose, how we expand.
Well, you're right, that does do that, but you do, but part of managing is picking and choosing. I mean, that's the whole point of trying to be more efficient, is you pick and choose. But you're right, it does, there's no question that it does cause ripples in an organization. Sometimes it causes waves.
And if this was, I mean, probably 14, 15 years ago or even longer, I guess, we were talking about a full-time, I guess it's 97, I don't know if I can, we just said, hey, this is, there's too much stuff for us to keep up with and not be able to communicate it out. And at the time, we looked at it and said, you know, if we had to make choices between cutting something someplace else, we, so we didn't, that was one of the reasons we didn't do it then. Again, I'll look at it, I just wanted to ask those questions.
Draft form at this point is under review and...
We're looking at point for...
Title, all of these things could be subject for further discussion or changes needed.
Well, I just have a question, I guess Rebecca or you or somebody, I always wonder, and this is a general, a general question, how can we load new responsibilities on current position? What that says to me is we have positions that really aren't having enough work to do and I can't comprehend that. I mean, is it, is it really that there's not enough work to do with the job description as it is? And if it is, then I don't like to keep piling more and more and more responsibility on employees because I think over the long haul, you pay for that. And maybe Rebecca doesn't have enough to do that. I don't think that's true. I think you do have enough to do probably, but how many hours a week do you see this in terms of addition to the responsibilities that that person already has? Because I think I've made this statement before, I don't believe in cutting positions and loading more on the left employees. It's not what I want to do. And I guess Rebecca, I'll ask you, do you not have enough work to do now?
I have plenty, but how I've been handling it when I've been doing these press releases and different things is the administrative part that I would do before, like making name badges or labels and that kind of stuff, I'm giving those to some of the administrative aides where I've been doing it all myself before.
I guess another, I guess I'll just throw this in here, we're talking about cutting back on positions and loading up people with more responsibilities and I'm thinking we've got the university up there, we've got the potential for interns that could come in and maybe help with some of those responsibilities. I think we're talking about community surveying here, which the university and the city could partner on that yearly. I know the university and the city partnered on the last recycling survey that we did and I'm just throwing that out, but I'm not opposed to this, I'm just thinking maybe we need to think about what some other possibilities are if we were to do something like this. I don't want to overload an employee if an employee already has a full load, whether it's Rebecca or anybody else, unless we can think in terms of bringing, we've got interns that are still in the media communications, we can bring those people in to assist. And that's just an idea to throw in if we're going to consider this.
And I know that that's, that appeals to Rebecca, she's expressed interest in that so you can relocate the load, whereas some of the higher level tasks would not be easily assigned to an intern, but the badges and the envelope stuff and the silver could be.
It's nice to hear human resource director says she likes interns, it's nice to hear.
I know.
The last one said no to all of it, thank you. I greatly appreciate hearing that. Thank you.
I know the chiefs want to say something, Commissioner, did you hear your hand up?
I did, but I just want to say that I didn't, I don't have a problem with the increase of, the additional jobs if that's what's needed. Because one, I've been very impressed with what Rebecca's done with the grants. So if these are areas that we need, then she's the person that I'd like to see, as long as, you know, when I first looked at it the same way, if it was going to be another position, that was going to be a problem for me. But when you're looking at a person who's doing an excellent job and what they're doing, if we're rewarding that person because they can go up to the next level and do some more work, I'm all for it. And I didn't see, you know, I didn't know the grades and all that. I was just looking at what was written down on paper, but I too just got a chance to read it today, right before I came down, so I didn't have a lot of questions on it because I looked at it and said, okay, it's Rebecca's job, so I'm okay there. Now let me look at this additional stuff to see, okay, well, some of the stuff she was already doing. So, you know, I looked and said, well, she's already doing that, okay, she, you know, she's been asked to do these other ones, so I didn't have a problem.
To her credit, she's graciously picked up some of these tasks as we saw need with no compensation for it. So some of these things, you're spot on. They're, they weren't on the prior job description, the old job description ended with a line just above the draft press releases. So draft press releases going down, those would be all new assignments related to responsibility, but some of those things are things that Rebecca was willing to jump in and assist with and I think that's what we see.
Just not, not to get bogged down because we're going to, we're going to talk about this on the next thing, but I think we need to remember that economics is not a stagnant profession. We live in a dynamic economy. So as a result, if Rebecca wants to work six more hours a week and make, six more, I'm just making something up, six more thousand dollars, or prior to it, that there's incentives and disincentives in our economic system and it's not just a command and you say you have 312 employees and you have 313 next year and 314 the year after, or you have 280 the next year. It's dynamic, there's going to be give and take, so it's hard for us to know, you know, what's going to motivate people. It just doesn't work that way. Some people can work well if they're overloaded and can do two or three people's jobs for the price of one. Some people can work 100 hours a week and can't do their job. It's just a hard thing. So I would just say that we need to remember that economics is a dynamic, it's a dynamic system, it's not a static system.
The chiefs, do you want to say?
Well, I've almost got my, actually it goes back to Commissioner Bowles' first point. You know, those duties are things that are actually going on now. Somebody's doing them, whether the city manager's having to task that with planning and zoning or, or public works or something like that. So, you know, having it coordinated in a spot makes sense. Of course, you know, I, you know, in my situation, you know, where, where we have a public information officer and, you know, we have a little more direct contact with the media, you know, some of those things wouldn't necessarily be applicable to us, but based on my previous experience as temporary city manager, I can see where a position like that would be beneficial. Not that it depends on how good looking and well-spoken and all that, but just to get the information out, get the message out and have a point. It's getting out of its spots, but you know, maybe have it directed a little bit. It probably wouldn't be too much more.
Do you have anything to say?
I was just going to point out that from, I know from what little that I've seen, I don't think it was anything probably to do with operations so that, you know, the sidewalk report or whatever the case may be, but using for example the article that was in the paper today, I have no doubt that when we go counting man-hours, that Rebecca, because she's good at what she does, that it was much more efficient in the manner that Rebecca done that as opposed to had I done that and that it came, she researched ISO and done a better report on it than I would have done. So we cut a PIO officer a couple, three years ago and so I'm assuming that for the most part, this isn't for the operations, the sidewalk interview or whatever the case may be, but more so the good news, that I know that the fire department's guilty of not passing along good news on what's going on within the fire department, that it's because we did cut that position and we've reassumed our, our education duties and, you know, we picked them up and others, we've reassigned, we're doing those. But as far as the day-to-day good things that we're doing, we know that we've bought equipment in the past two years that are going a long ways towards making a big difference in our community, that we've really not advertised enough because that's not what firefighters do, go out advertising. Advertising's probably the wrong word, but I do think we've got to advertise what, the product that we're returning to the streets and Rebecca's much more efficient and better suited. And considering we've cut that position in the fire department, I mean, even whatever percentage it may be, when you look at the fire department, a long way could help. That's, I can see the positive aspect, especially in the, again, not the sidewalk interview.
And as Commissioner Bowles pointed out, it's a cost-effective way to gain some of that needed ground.
She's way better at it than we are. I can tell you from the one article that she, I mean, she's very efficient in helping us out with that.
Anything else on this?
That's it.
Can I leave now?
You're not going to go through line by line though, right?
Yeah. No. My intent at this point is to do a very broad brush and to open it up for questions and be happy to answer any questions that any, any city commissioner might have. Does everybody have a copy of the budget book? Would you like one, sir? You don't have to look at it.
Let's see, where did it go? Just give me that and I'll just...
I'm just making sure, looking, listening.
Do you have another copy with you?
Your, would you pass that down, please?
I can go back and get it, but I just...
I'll give it back because I have it on the desk.
All right. I say my intent is to go through this fairly quickly, but obviously I'll answer any questions. The first thing is to recap and really this is more Steve's document than my document, but it basically shows you where we are in the 200, the 300 and the 400 and then our SRF loan and our sewer bond, where we were at the beginning of the, of this current fiscal year. Line eight is where we expect to be on each of those programs at the end of this fiscal year. Obviously, line nine is where we'll be July 1 of this year and line 16 is where we anticipate being June 30 of next year. If you go at the far right, we're starting, we started the year with 14.6 million, we're going to end at 614, 20 million, 20.1, and then we will end at 630, 15 at 13.2. We have a lot of projects proposed in next year's budget. In the 200 account, our budget this year was 5,95,000 and change. We're going to spend approximately 4.86 million. We are going up, proposing to go up 5.14. A lot of that has to do with, obviously there's some raises in there for folks programmed. There's also some, some other things that are going up and again, if you have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer specific questions. And again, if you have specific questions, I'll be happy to answer specific questions. But basically, it's just under a 1% increase in the O&M budget. 300 account, we have $12 million programmed in this year's budget. We've actually been a little behind the last few years. We're trying to play catch-up. For those of you that aren't aware, our SSOs, which are sanitary sewer overflows by our consent judgment, are supposed to be gone by December of '15, which gives us a little over 18 months. And we sure hope we're there when we get there, but it's looking.
Is it?
It's going to be tough for us to do, but we've got an aggressive program for next year. We're proposing to spend 16.3 million. And a lot of that is getting the INI out of our system, which is a lot of our SSO problem.
Bill, what happens if you don't meet the deadline?
There are monetary consequences. There are monetary consequences.
How much?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I had to go back and read, but it's based on occurrence of overflows. It's, I believe, it's a $2,000 or $3,000 fine. And I say I'm doing this off memory, and it's been a while since I've read that document, but I believe it's $2,000 or $3,000 per occurrence, per event. So if we have a rain event and we have three SSOs, that is considered will be three, $2,000 to $3,000 fines. And a occurrence is defined as a 24-hour period. So if we even have one occurrence that lasts for two or three days, that's a $2,000 or $3,000, $2,000 or $3,000 fines.
Could you get us information on that?
I can get you specific.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
But again, we're focusing very hard on the SSO-driven projects. We are starting to do some CSO projects. But again, we do not have, as of this point, an approved long-term control plan. We have gotten comments. We have responded to those comments. So we are waiting for either an approval or a second round of comments. As soon as we get those comments, at that point, we will have to start addressing some of the CSO issues. But as most of you are aware, we are addressing a lot of CSO stuff now. You know, we're not waiting till the end. It's just not our primary focus to date. In the 400 account.
Hey, Bill, before you go to 400, because I didn't see that you had this little handout, but you know yours by heart. The equalization base, and I was just wondering what happened. We spent, estimated spent 4.5 million?
Yes.
But we're going back to 1.5, and that's because?
It's a $7.3 million project.
So we intentionally spent a lot this?
Well, we started the project last fiscal year. I think we spent $1 million last year. We're estimating we're going to spend about 4 point something this year, and then the balance will be in next year.
We already spent the 4.5, right?
We're projecting we will spend 4.5 between, by the end of this year.
Okay.
By the end of this fiscal year.
That's correct. Thank you.
Basically, that cost is being spread over a three-year, a three-budget process. Also, that project is being funded through a state revolving fund grant at 1.75%. And we do not start paying that grant back until the project, actually, I believe it's six months after the project is closed out.
Thank you.
In the 400 account, which is our lateral account, we had 275 projected. We had hoped that we would actually have started our lateral program. We had some glitches due to some personnel changes, so that kind of got put on hold. We're projecting we'll spend about 90 this year. We've got 270 in next year. The one thing you, if, I probably should have pointed this out. If you go back to the recap sheet, you will notice that that program brings in about $650,000 a year. And per some discussions the city manager and I have had, you will notice there is no revenue in next year's budget. We are assuming at this point that that fee is probably going to be, I'd like to say, suspended but, and are eliminated between now and the beginning of the fiscal year as part of the budget process. Is that correct, Steve? But we still have money to spend, and obviously, as that program rolls out, we will continue to spend that money on the lateral program. We don't have any specific projects identified at this point because, like I say, we're still trying to do that. Basically, the last thing is the background. You'll see the travel and training budget we've got. We have two different line items. We have an estimated cost required and estimated cost desired. The amount in my 200 account is the required amount, but there's additional training we would like to do if money becomes available. A lot, why would I say a lot? All the stuff that's in required are certifications and other licenses that we are required to have by different statutes. And so it's things to keep those licenses and certifications current. And then the last two pages of that is our vehicle summary. Those items that are in red are vehicles that we are in the process of proposing to replace in our current year's budget. Or they are items that, or vehicles that we replaced, well, they're either be, proposed to be replaced in this budget, or they have already been replaced in our current year's budget but have not been surplus and sold yet. They're still sitting on our lot and will be sold in the near future. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions anybody's got about equipment, personnel, chemicals, emergency funds, projects. They're all in here.
Let me start you off with one, but easy.
That's what I like, is easy.
Because I have the same question on some other budgets, so whatever you give, it might affect everybody else. Other services, because I see that we have budgeted in the past, and this is on page four out of seven under.
200 account?
400 account.
Oh, 400 account.
And it looks like we spent $9,000 one year and $12,000 previous, but we're requesting
What we're anticipating, again, when we had anticipated ramping this up, this is a program. If you go back probably 10 or 12 years ago, or previous, all the literature that was out there and all the programs said that private systems were approximately 40 to 60% of inflow and infiltration into the sanitary sewer. And the balance of that, either 40 or 60, you know, 50% plus or minus 10% was private systems and public systems. The literature that's out there today is saying more like it's 25% from the public side and 75% from the private side. So the, some of that's due to the public side's tightening their systems up. Some of it is better data that's showing a significant portion of inflow and infiltration is coming from the private side. What we have trying to, what we're trying to do is develop a customer assistance program, for lack of a better term, where we can go in and where we identify a private lateral program that's on a person's private property, a program that will allow us to assist that homeowner with removing that INI from my system. Now, what that's going to look like, we don't know yet. Like I say, we had planned on rolling that out earlier. We've had some issues. We had some personnel changes, and all that has impacted the rollout of that. We do have a consultant onboard that's working towards that program. They have helped in other communities to develop those type programs. So, you know, like I say, we had hoped to be actually spending that money this year, but it's not going to happen. We hope to start spending that money next year.
Any others? True down. Okay, let's keep going.
We just have one. It's in that same category, the 400 account?
Uh-huh.
On page one of seven. And I think it's just what we probably carry, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it.
Yes.
Because you have $75,000 estimated, and we're budgeting the same thing we budgeted last year, $250,000. So is something extra going to happen there, too?
Well, again, that's, actually, that's where that program will come out of, is that line item, that 250. The $25,000 in equipment that we spent '15 really is more like buying pieces and parts and supplies to repair laterals with.
Got it.
Which is a small percentage of the total program ultimately.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody else got any questions? I guess I have got some broad questions. The, I don't think you know because they haven't finished with our comments, but do we know yet on what date we're supposed to be finished with fulfilling the consent judgment?
At this point, no, we do not.
At one time, it was like, thought to be maybe 2022 or '23?
Let's see. If you go by the actual printed document, it would be seven plus fifth, no, seven plus, seven plus 10, that's right. Yes, seven plus 10, it'd be 2017. My interpretation of that document, it is 10 years from the approval of the long-term control plan.
Which we keep waiting to be approved.
Which we keep waiting to be approved.
So we'll both be gone by then?
Maybe, maybe not.
Okay. Not for it to be approved, but for the 10 years from that time.
Right. Because the consent judgment, actually, the consent judgment was 15 years. Let me back up. The consent judgment was 15 years. The administrative order that we got from EPA said in no case to exceed 10 years. Now, my argument is it can't be 10 years from the consent judgment because we don't have a long-term control plan approved. How can I begin implementation of program?
I asked that same question.
If we don't have it. Now, we have had discussions with Division of Water and Division of Enforcement, and they somewhat concur with our interpretation, but at this point, it's a moot issue because we don't have an approved long-term control plan.
Okay. No. All right. The, I guess my concern, and you've addressed it, and I appreciate that, and I think the city manager's addressed it as well, I'm concerned about this lateral fee that we paid for 10 years with little to show for it. Now, and I've looked at the numbers, thankfully you gave them to me, and where we've spent some money. But basically, I just want to make sure that we never again pass a fee that takes money out of the private economy and then doesn't do anything with it to the extent that we would like for it to do. Because there was a committee, you know all this, Bill, a committee formed, all this stuff that you were talking about now, we were hoping to have started 10 years ago. And yet we kept collecting the fee. So I just want to make sure that from now on, if we do collect a fee, that we've got it, and I realize you've been swamped, and we had all these other things happen. But, you know, I think for Joe taxpayer out there, if they realize that they've been paying a fee for 10 years that's now accumulated five, over $5 million that really hasn't been utilized, they're going to kind of wonder, well, why did I do that? And I really don't have a very good answer to give them, except that hopefully, you're not going to pay the fee anymore, and we'll use that money for storm waters, or not storm, for sewer stuff that needs to be done. And so really, the only disadvantage was is that you didn't get the use of your money at that time.
Right.
And you might have had to pay it later in another way. But that's not an answer we want to give again. All right. Vehicles.
Yes.
Have we analyzed the, those ones that hardly have been driven, that aren't in red? And I'm just wondering why we have them? And there's probably good answers, but like, for example, 2006 safety van, we've driven 62 miles.
That's a vehicle that is driven only when we do confined space or something like that out in the system. We have to have it to do confined space entry because it's got all of our equipment.
And there's no way to put it in another vehicle that we have, so we're only using something, that seems like a bad way to use a money.
I won't disagree. It's not much different than the crane truck.
I wasn't going to bring that up because I knew the obvious answer, that you have to have a crane truck.
We have to have a crane truck.
Yeah, I saw that one.
And, and.
Went a whopping 109 miles.
Yeah, exactly. And it's what, over 10 years old?
I'm thinking, can you rent them?
Yes, you can. But the problem is, when I need it, I need it right then. And I can't, by renting, I can lease one if I have time to schedule it. But if I've got a pump, a pump station down and I've got to pull those pumps today, I have no guarantee I can get a crane truck today. And I don't know that Division of Water would be too understanding if I say, well, I can't really pull those pumps and get that station fixed for three days because that's the earliest I can get a crane truck.
Well, and they're ma, and just thinking out loud, I don't know those answers. There may actually be vendors within a 60-mile area that will guarantee that. I don't know. And I wasn't going to bring up the crane truck.
The other thing we use a crane truck is we use that to support public works when they're flooded.
I got that. But, so there's no other way to use something besides this safety van that we, 62 miles?
No.
And I will say, I've been involved in confined space entry cases and fatalities. And if a safety van prevents one fatality, it's worth it for confined space.
Cheap price to pay.
Dangerous situation.
I understand. That's a good answer. Ford Taurus, this Ford, when we driven 533 miles? 2002?
Oh, that's the, actually, at the present time, it's non-functioning. Actually, we need to get it to the garage. I don't even know what's wrong with it, but they say it doesn't run, so I would need to look at that.
Well, I can believe that. That's all the miles it's got, we've driven. This 2007 Crown's Victoria, which we've driven 1,556 miles?
Oh, that's the one that we just got, I think, last fall.
So we haven't had that very long, that's why we got.
Well, actually, it was, that's how long, that's the mileage that we put on it. Actually, it was the previous city manager's vehicle.
Of which previously was it, Parks Department?
Yes, prior to that was.
Yeah.
It was Steve Brooks?
Steve.
Yeah. We get a lot of hand-me-downs.
I can see that. This utility van, 1993, 439 miles?
That's one that, quite frankly, once we decide to surplus it, I don't know that we'll replace it. We used to use it quite a lot, but we've picked up other vehicles that frankly are more.
Or can we get rid of it now?
I can look at it.
I'm just saying if you.
I don't know the answer to that.
Because we're carrying it not this much, but I assume we're paying insurance on it.
We're paying insurance, and there's obviously maintenance and fuel, so I will look into that one.
I think these others must, the, I assume these, Bill, these trucks here at the bottom, Chevy half-ton and the F-250, 4x4, that don't have a lot of miles on them, they have more than that. So what do they use for? One with the, the 2001 Chevy half-ton, 4x4?
You talking about 98D?
90X, I think, and 98D, those two. Yes, sir.
The 90X is used primarily by the lab. They basically use it when they do their pre-treatment inspections and stuff like that. We also use it for a couple of other things. It's one of the few that we do have a hitch on, and so we occasionally use it for that. The other one is basically used around the plant. They use it to run errands, go pick up supplies, that kind of stuff. The other thing you have to look at is a lot of our vehicles, while they may not have a lot of monitoring. not have a lot of mileage, have a lot of hours, because a lot of our equipment, like our rod truck, our back truck, a lot of those, the vehicles run, or the, the equipment runs off of the power of the motor. So, while it may only have a couple thousand miles on it, it may have the equivalent of 10,000 hours of-
You've educated me on that, that's why I didn't ask any of those vehicles.
Yeah.
Because I, I've learned that.
Yeah.
The, I guess, the, only other question I have is, and I, and I think this is a legal question, and a finance question, and a sewer question, and that is, can, can we stretch out the non-consent projects and use any of that money to either help fund storm water, or give a greater share of that to the general fund, which could in turn help fund storm water?
You have to be very careful using sewer monies for, other than sewer projects, because people that are in the county that pay for sewer service, they're not much interested in paying for City of Frankfurt's general administration costs.
You know, I, I figured that. I guess what I'm saying is, if, if you could make a strong defense, which was, which was legally strong and morally strong, to get more money from the sewer department per year for operations, you could help fund storm water, if in fact, that case could be made, I don't know that it can be, I haven't looked at it.
And, and we do fund some storm water projects in the combined sewer.
Yeah, that was-
We, we've done that, obviously, Louisville Hill, we spent 1.2 million, I think, I couldn't tell you how much we spent at Home Street, of course, a lot of Home Street has been done with grants, I don't even know how much grants we've had in that, and I don't see Rebecca here, oh, no. But we spent a lot of that, but there was some money that was spent on the old Home Street storm water, it was like 700, 800,000 dollars, and then anything else we spent at Home Street, we financed, again, because it's taking storm water out of my combined sewer, which we see as a good thing.
Right.
Louisville Hill, the river spur that the county did, I say, we've, we've spent quite a bit of money out of the sewer fund.
And we're, we're doing that now, right?
We're doing that now, in the combined area.
Okay, so, it would just take an analysis to see whether or not you could get more money from sewer to go to the general fund, and we need to be defensible both-
It would have to be defensive, right.
Proper.
And like I say, I can defend combined sewers all day long.
Could, could we, could we look into that?
I don't know if there's some type of EPA guidance document on, on that, or whether Steve's ever looked at that specific issue?
I have no idea.
I don't want to make what we're getting get us a problem, in other words, we're all of a sudden, we're having, we're getting even less than what we're getting now, I'm just asking if it can be done.
I, I know we've increased the amount over the last-
We have.
-five years, I would say.
Yeah, we have, we increased it last year.
We could see if we could find some guidance on that.
I can, I can work with our auditor and see if I can-
Wonder if KIA could help us with that, or?
Yeah, DLG.
DLG, maybe.
Well, KIA, I'm south there too.
Maybe DLG.
DLG might be able to do it. KLC, maybe. Thank you.
KLC would be a good one, I'm sure somebody had to have their problem somewhere else.
Maybe, hopefully.
Are we selling the vector, or are we going to sell a vector?
No, we, we sold the, the small one, but we bought another one, which we don't have yet, but, they, they delivered it and then took it back, because it was missing some parts. So, so we still don't have our brand-new vector yet, but it should be, should be arriving about any day. If anybody's got other questions, send me an email, call me, and we'll get you answered. If I don't know it, I'll make it up. I've got a special find for Tom, you didn't know that?
I like yours too.
He's got a little-
That was good as hell.
I like the bug.
I guess we'll go to the general fund budgets, or finance director, come through.
Does everybody have a copy of the information that I gave, you know, filed the other day? And then, I'm pretty much going to stay with this recap. Everybody okay? Okay. Just some, some general comments, I think I can get through this pretty quickly, I want to stay with the summary pretty much that I, that I sent to you several days ago by email, it's a three-page summary, I'm going to stay with that pretty much, but I wanted to make some general comments about the budget process. You know, we worked, you know, six months probably on the budget, doing the budget, but actually, I just want to, just reemphasize, this budget process is a year-long, 24/7 thing, because, you know, all the managers have to be, be really familiar with the numbers before they can start to put the numbers on a page and make sure that we can implement the budget, otherwise, these numbers on this, on the page, just, that's all they are, is numbers, so, I want to thank all the managers for their support during the year, continually trying to implement these budgets. And then I want to thank the commission as well, because you all gave us the guidelines last year, and then you reemphasized the guidelines this year, and that's the underlying data that we use to prepare the budget, so I want to thank you guys for providing that leadership as well. And then, I did, I want to make one comment, and you've probably noticed this in the budget, as you've looked through the numbers this year, but we, this is the first year, I've been here nine years, this is my ninth budget, and this is the first time we've been able to address some of these lingering issues that we have, just due to struggling with lack of resources, but, and I want to just make several comments on those, one thing, and I've mentioned this to you in an email, but I want to explain it to you, is that we've had to, we're, we're in the process of asking our auditor to release some sick-time accrual for capital purchases, approximately $1.5 million of capital purchases we were anticipating to make this year, above what we normally make, and, and basically what that is, is each year, the city calculates the amount of unused sick-time that everybody doesn't use, for example, and then we put a dollar amount on it based on the person's rate, and then we have to give that to the auditor, and they put that on the books, and that's what we have to pay if someone were to leave the city and retire, or if they leave before they retire and they don't draw the money down. We started to look at the money that we had sitting on the books versus what we're spending, and we're, we're accruing it dollar for dollar over here, but we're only spending 30% of that money, so there's a, you know, there's a, you know, a gap there of 70%, about $2.2 million. And so, so City Manager and I have been working with the, with the auditor to see if we can release that money so we can buy much-needed capital equipment, because it's much more effective use of our money than just letting it sit there, not earning any interest, so that's, that's what we're talking about doing, not hocus pocus, it's just, you know, I didn't really realize how much we were spending until, you know, our HR director said, hey, look, this thing is way, way too much money sitting in this account, so, anyway. So, anyway, that's, that's what, that's what we're looking to do, and some of that money is going to go for capital, some of that money is going to go to increase our reserves, and it'll put our reserves approximately $10 million, so that's what we're looking to do. Also, in this budget period, we've seen a reduction in our pension rates, our pension rates have gone down about 6%, and the reduction of that, as well as some of our staff through attrition, will offset the proposed 2.5% raise that we have for our employees, so basically, our, our wages will be break-even from what we spent last year. So that's a, you know, that's a positive, especially if we can continue to see our pension rates hold down some, that's going to take some pressure off our budget. And then, also, in this budget, we have addressed the, the City of Frankfurt's need for aquatic center, we've got that bonded in here, approximately $4.2 million bonded in here, that in combination with the money that we hope to get from the county, the money that we're going to take from the reserves, we can, you know, we can handle our aquatic projection expense of approximately $5 million. So those are just some of the big things that we've been able, that we're looking to do in this budget period, that we've not been able to accomplish in the past, needs that we have. Okay, so I'm just going to kind of walk through some of these, the big items, I don't want to take much of your time, and again, if you have any questions, let me know, but I'm going to go through the summary. Any questions so far?
Okay. Just for me, as on the, I think with the sick time, that's always been sort of an area that we just haven't touched before.
It's been growing, it's been growing, excellent, well-
So we're just going to, you're just thinking, we'll just do this one time this year, and we'll make a habit out of it, because?
We don't, we can't do it, we're going to keep, here's what I, here's what I project-
Also, because it'll, it will catch us.
Well, like I said, we're spending 30 cents on a dollar, so we're going to leave, you know, we've got four, almost $5 million sitting in that account right now, we only need maybe half of that money, maybe two and a half million, so we'll still have some cushion in that account that we don't, that we won't touch, so we should be safe from any kind of big adjustment that's going to hit our books, no, no major economic impact from this, other than just, we've got money sitting in the savings account we're not using, we can utilize that money more effectively to buy some needed equipment than not purchasing.
And we're doing that, we're really maximizing overnight deposits on everything that can be.
Well, we've got, you know, we've got money tied up anywhere from one year to two years in CDs, but you know, you're, you know how it is when you go to buy a CD anymore, you're not earning any money on your-
Sorry, I didn't mean to bog you down, I just, that one was-
That's all we got.
That's sort of been that sacred area that we haven't-
Yeah, this, this is basically just an account that's been, that's been building, and it, and it was building before I got here, I bet you there was probably $4 million when I arrived, so it hadn't grown that much since I've been here, it's just, we didn't really, we weren't really monitoring how much we were spending out of that account.
Okay, I mean, I, it's just, this has been a thing where we-
Yeah, the former HR director mentioned it to me several years ago, and I said, well, I'm going to start monitoring to see exactly how much we are spending out of that account, and so when I did, you know, and then I, I also went to the auditor and gave them that information, and they concurred that, you know, that we can utilize that money if we choose to do so, in fact, I don't think they want us sitting there as a reserve, that it's, if it's not a true reserve, you know, it's overstated, it's an overstated liability on the books, basically. So that's, that's, that's what we're-
That would just surprise me.
Yeah. So, in fact, just one last point on that, when the auditor came this year, I'd mentioned it to him, I said, I want to, I want to run the numbers and see what we spent out of that account for the last two years, and so then I had Glenn prepare a document that showed exactly what we'd spent, and what percentage it was against what we had reserved, and it was 30%, and that's how we got the number, so that's how we arrived at it. Okay, and then I want to just go through some of the major points of the budget that line up with our, with our goals and objectives, and that's on the first page there, I'll just go through some of them briefly, if you've got any questions. This budget is a structurally balanced budget, receipts exceed our expenditures by $228,000, the budget that we're proposing for the general fund this year. We're also proposing, as I said, to issue a bond for the Aquatic Center, $4.2 million, and that's lining up with, with our objectives, or with the commission's objectives. We're also looking to improve the work climate for the employees by issuing a 2.5% COLA, impact of that is about the half a million dollars, but, you know, we're going to be able to absorb that, you know, through our reduction in pension rates that we have to pay out, and then through attrition of employees, about five employees attrition that will offset that. And that, that answers the next question about meeting and improving efficiency standards for five people, it's an impact of $270,000 of a reduction of cost, employment cost, for attrition again, and then, another goal of the commission has been to reduce, reduce personnel costs as a percentage of the budget, 1% per year over the next four years, and this budget has reduced 1% over last year's budget, 70% versus 71% of operating costs is, is personnel cost and benefit cost. And then, looking at expected, or unexpected windfalls of cash that we find, and that's what we're doing with this utilization of the sick-time accrual that we just talked about. And then, we've got some increase in overhead expenditures, they're up about 1% from last year's budget, because of, of some of the other goals that the, the commission wanted to, to pursue, and then we've also, and you can see those three, three goals that I listed up there, and then also, we've put some expected increases in here, we know that we're going to, for example, we're going to have to renegotiate our landfill costs next year, and we don't know what that rate's going to be, so Tom has put some, some cost in there in case we can't keep the cost flat, but I know he's going to work hard to keep that cost flat, I feel confident. And so, and then we've also, you know, we went through a big storm, several storms, snowstorms this past year, and our costs are significant for the street department, for example, and we've, you know, we've got that budget at the high level, and hopefully we can keep that cost, we won't go through this another year like we've had this last winter, but we've got that at a, at a, at a higher level to take care of those costs, and the same thing with a flood event, we've got a flood event built into the flood wall, storm water account, so, that's one, it's a couple of the driving forces of the, of the overhead account going up a little bit. Okay, so, we're going to flip over to page two, three, and nothing really on that page that we, you've got the summary of the expenses and the receipts over expenditures, as I said, we're $228,000 proposed in the black for next year, and that could range, you know, that could range $200,000 to $500,000, you know, and so, I think that's a conservative number, to be honest with you. The only thing that we, we budget conservatively on the receipt side, next item, we budgeted $33.1 million in receipts, and we, we basically bumped up the occupational tax side, approximately 1%, a couple hundred thousand dollars, that's the only increase that we've got, there in this budget, there are no, no increases in property tax rates, no increases in taxes or fees, no increases in insurance premium or occupational tax, the only thing we've done is just budget normal growth for occupational tax. On the expense side, I've kind of talked about that, I don't think there's anything there, I'm just going to pick out anything that, that I haven't discussed, I think everything is, I think I've already talked about all of it, actually, we've, one thing y'all want to make, I want to talk about is your agency contributions, but we've kept that flat for last year, except for Franklin County Development Liaison position, they're discussing about a poss, a potential adding of position there, and we've put $20,000 increase in that.
Where's that one?
It's a, a position for Franklin County Development to talk, discuss with, I reckon there'd be a person to coordinate new businesses when they come into-
Okay.
To coordinate, discuss with those new businesses, what they need to do, the procedures that they need to take in order to become acclimated in the city for it.
But that was part of, going to be like other agencies that are going to contribute to that too.
I'm sorry, yeah, there'll be other, I think, I suppose, what, three other?
It's pretty early in that process.
Yeah, so-
They've just done a job description, change of payment for the job description, it would go under Franklin First Foundation, and I don't even know whether, I, you can rest assured that we're one place there, looking for money, but it's probably the usual suspects.
That's why I'm thinking so far, because I think that's just a shit, check for the city, proposed.
Moving on, page three, the capital purchases, as I said, we've got a budget of $3 million this year for capital purchase, we've been spending about 1.2, 1.5 million a year, so we've doubled our, you know, our budget for capital purchases because of that release of that fund. And then I've got below that, a breakdown of that, of the major capital purchases, we've got an ambulance in there for $180,000, we've got a replacement of a fire engine for $450,000, some breathing equipment, and these are, these are things that have been budgeted reoccurring for the last, you know, four, five years, but we haven't been able to move any direction on any of this stuff, because we just haven't had the resources. Breathing apparatuses that we need, $250,000, and expand, station number two, $160,000. So there's $861,000 capital purchases proposing in the fire station.
Can I ask you a quick question? What's the, what's the threshold on the, we have to pay prevailing weight, 200?
250.
Any, have you done any, I looked at that station two, and of course, I've been wanting to renovate that for a long time.
A long time.
Have y'all done any estimates yet? Because I, I keep thinking you'd do, you know, me, I keep thinking you'd do a lot cheaper, I didn't know if y'all had any estimates.
No, we, we like to think that we can do it cheaper, we took the first square foot and we, we came up with a number, we did use prevailing weight, I forget the formula of that formula, I forget, that was formula time figure, which, oh, the architect cost, no, that's how that number came up, yeah, absolutely increased it by considering that RF something formula that was used to come up with that on the first square foot. So if we don't like doing prevailing weight, architectural fees and guaranteed, you know, architectural fees come in lower than that, that's all, all the more bad.
Because all you're doing is adding on, correct?
That's right.
An existing structure?
Yes.
So do we have, asking another crazy question perhaps, is it, do we have to do fancy architectural drawings, or is there a way to do it, which...
My assumption is, and I don't know the answer for sure on that.
I also don't wanna get something that's not in camp either.
Right, my, my thoughts are, we need to probably do so as opposed to three of us sitting down, and then come out with something, need better company.
Well, probably that's because of the roof system down there, the way that's designed.
Yeah, well, we spoke to Mr. Banks earlier in the week on, on a different project, one of the things we'll come right back into is we've got to be ADA compliant, even though we're a fire station, we do have to be ADA compliant on anything we add on, so of all those architectural, that's where that comes in.
That's right, I, that makes sense, just asking.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so in we, in this budget, we've included five, five police creatures in this budget, two out of the sick time accrual, and then three out of the general fund budget. And then we've got, Public Works has several items, they've been in need of, a lift device in the garage, a street sweeper, and then they were gonna retrofit 2007 truck, that's about $400,000.
I thought we were gonna need a duck truck. We're not getting one.
We tried to prioritize, you know, we kinda went back and discussed things.
Oh, I didn't, I just...
And then, you know, we have the rollout cart lease that we have to take care of, and then we're gonna get, you know, an automated garbage truck as well, that's, those two items are about $448,000. And then we've got a lot of small, like reoccurring lease costs that, that we're gonna take care out of this budget, and those, those items, they add up to about $700,000, so total purchases out of general funds is about $1.2 million. And then municipal aid, there's some things that Tom's gonna purchase out of there, the skid steer grinder, $85,000, pot patcher, and then a couple of leaf pickers, is that what, two, is there two in there?
Leaf pickers?
$90,000.
Don't say pot patcher and then leaf picker.
He's still a previous terminology.
I'm just trying to get...
He just wants to sit there.
That's the whole business.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a revenue maker.
So people know that's a pothole patcher that heats up and allows the pad, makes pot patches much better than the cold mix, because it's got the heat element there.
Yeah.
It's a lot of dangerous, but really cool, that we can do that.
It's actually a little bit different method than that.
So that's the $3 million worth of capital purchases that we have, so... Any other, any other comments or questions? I mean, I, I went through that quickly, there's, there's a lot of detail, but this time, I don't know if you know this, we try to put everything on one page, I hope that's useful, because, because we've got all the trends of what we actually spent, you can kinda just look across there, and if something jumps out at you, you can see it at a glance. Hopefully that, that's been helpful for you.
Beats that thing we had last year.
Yeah, so this package has the whole budget posted like that thick, and then, you know, I didn't give you the, the agency request, I didn't hear anybody say that they really wanted that information, I've got it if anybody wants to see it, but I didn't wanna give everybody one of these, so...
I like this much better.
Yeah.
I got it last year, it still looks like that.
Yeah.
I miss it.
Do you?
I want it back.
You can get one for you, y'all weren't here the days when they always would come in one by one?
We did do it one by one.
You did?
I did do it one by one every year, yes, $350,000 metal found every year.
No, no, I'm talking about the agency that would come in and make their presentation.
No, oh yeah, no, not that, even those.
Yeah, I have the, I got a recap, if y'all didn't bring the agency request, if y'all wanna talk about any of that stuff, I mean...
I'm just gonna point out though on that, when you have the way you've got that broken down, which is good, it's, you got the quasi-governmental agencies like KCDC, Council on Aging, those...
Yeah, downtown Frankfurt, yeah.
DFI, because we're the Main Street, doing the Main Street program through them, and...
Sure, Tourism Commission.
Tourism Commission, so it's always, I think it's always important when folks question what we spend on subsidy requests, people use the term charities, it's not charitable contributions that we're making, we're making expenditures to support quasi-governmental agencies such as Tourism, Economic Development, that has some return on that investment, if you'll call it investment. And those agencies that we're giving appropriations to, those are agencies that government, we would have to probably pick up that service if, if it weren't for agencies like Council on Family Use or the Sunshine Center, things like that. And when we get to the Humane Society, that is an actual contract with an agency that provides a service, and it's not a charitable donation. I would just like to throw that out to the benefit of anyone who's new, if you're new. Raise your hand if you're new. I'm surprised you didn't.
I feel new.
But that's okay, so if you have questions about that, just, I think it comes out to about, it's a little bit under 1%, I don't know, off the top of my head, what, it's point something...
Yeah, we gave $425,000. 300, yeah, 321, yeah.
Well, I'm saying when you take out...
393,000.
So when you separate the, the quasi-governmental agencies to subsidies.
Yeah, 188,000 versus 205, it's a third of it.
So that's always like to point out, when you look at percentages, and also those agencies, hopefully everyone is okay with, with the agency, I know Rosam asked for a $5,000 increase.
Yeah, Rosam asked for, yeah, actually a $7,000 increase. Asked for 27, we gave him, what we gave him, I should 20,000.
Well, thanks for that, if there might be any questions to come in, Tom, there.
I think I've sat here figuring that out, because one of them was the fire station, and I think the reason here is, I appreciate you putting the trends in there, but when I saw something go from $60,000 to $886,000 as far as his request, I said, "Okay, something must be wrong there," you know, we hadn't been giving him anything.
Right.
And he put it all in once, but I think I heard some of that, and, and the other one, I think I figured it out since we've been sitting here, because I noticed on the F, it looked like we didn't budget any social security for the commission office, but then I see money over there, say we spent $2,600, so I think, I don't know what that zero is under...
Oh wow, there's no budget there.
Right, it just stands out like a sore thumb.
Yeah.
Never seen a zero on it.
Yeah, I don't, but that was, that, well, that's sitting there for 2013, 14, last year's budget, I don't know why, I don't know why, it might have gotten commingled with the employee pension cost, because the employee pension cost is like it's bung, so...
I mean, I can just ignore it.
Yeah, it's, but it's, yeah, I know, I know when you probably pay social security on your, so, yeah, I don't know why that, unless it got bused in with, that's a good question, but I'd say it probably got bused in with employee pension costs.
Well, you know, I got my hand up, but I got fewer questions than usual. On sanitation expenditures on page 17, it's probably more of a question for Tom, I guess I'm worried about the trend, and would like to hear maybe how the trend might get better. It looks like our, our costs are escalating pretty dramatically, and we expected that at first, but kinda like to know where we think we're going.
Right now, as far as our personnel, we're down three full-time positions, and the plan was in five years to be on five. Now, we're filling one of those three permanent positions with the seasonal, a lot of that's depending on how many inmates we get, but as we get more and more of the automated trucks, we, we can keep reducing our staff, and so the idea is to get down the two more, at least, two more full-time positions, so, to get to five.
The, when do we, when do we have the garbage cans payoff?
We have been paying on them three, two years?
No, we got maybe three years, I think we might have two more years on us, I think.
I think it's five, yes. I think it's five years.
Five-year lease.
We started doing that...
And, and last year we bought some more of the smaller ones.
Are we still doing that, or they can get free, change those cans in July?
On July and January, they can change.
Yeah, I think we should try to promote that a little bit, next couple months, and just...
But are we getting promote, I'm sorry?
The trade-in, see if they wanna get the larger can instead of the smaller can?
It's that where the, the trend.
What, how many extra medium and large cans we got?
We're, we're at about 48% of the trash cans out there are the free cans.
Do we know how much revenue we're making on the trash bags, now we dropped it to a dollar a bag?
I don't know that today, but I can tell you that.
Yeah, I guess that would be nice to know.
I don't think we made that much before.
I don't see people using them very much.
That's why we dropped it, and we split, kicked away from it, obviously, we were spending money on them.
So, so do you, do you see this trend leveling, in other words, in 2011, it was narrowing $28,000, and I realize there's a lot of ins and outs on this, because on one hand, the taxpayer was paying it with their B, on the other hand, they're not, I know there's rights and left hands, but the trend is disturbing, do you see this trend leveling out, or you see it continuing to escalate?
Well, it's hard to look before, because before it was, it was everything.
Yes, sir.
But it was, don't buy any equipment, don't buy any trucks, and we went several years without buying any trucks, now we're starting to buy trucks again. We had a $5 fee, then we had what we have now. And what we're getting for our recycling, while the recycling tonnage is still out of the way, the dollar amount we're getting back is, is lower. And so I think that, yes, that's what we're working towards, is, is reducing our costs as we go automated. We have our first truck that's automated for trash in possession, but we don't have it out on the street yet, so as we start getting those, we're getting the finalizing the lights and all that stuff on it. But as we start getting those trucks out and working, and educating the public on separating their cans and putting them where they can pick them up and move on, the costs go down, because labor's the key.
So it's still too early to tell?
I think it's trending down, despite, despite what the numbers say, we don't have, we don't have a really good comparable, what you're telling them. Well, we're getting, we're getting less and less people, we're using less and less people to do the same job, but there's a lot of big variables out there, we, we can't control the cost of, of the commodity of the recycling, we can't control how many inmates we get, there's some, there's some issues like that, that are just, I can't forecast.
I understand, so maybe next year it'll be the same or less.
Well, that's what, that's the goal.
But you're planning right now, I mean, you got one temporary out there that you're filling, kind of full-time hours, right?
Yeah, we have one seasonal work.
In anticipation to try to one day...
Yeah, we're not, yeah, we don't want to fill that with a...
Yeah.
Full-time because...
Full-time position.
On page 24, Lakeview.
What's that?
I'm ready for you.
What? I assume we had to buy something, what happened with the equipment? The equipment went up from 3,000 budget this year to 9,000 in the new budget.
What do we, what do we got next year?
I don't know, that's why I'm saying...
Is it so high or something out there, parking lot waving or something?
No, I believe they're talking about that, I believe that was there.
Oh, good.
There shouldn't be anything at Lakeview.
No.
There, Lakeview should, should just basically flatline, and other than, we talked about that earlier.
No, I don't remember.
So, Lakeview's equipment's been 3,000 for...
You wanna leave it 3,000?
Yeah, like, Lakeview's equipment's been 3,000 since day one, I'm sorry.
So we just got six more thousand bucks?
Yay!
Wow, so excited, keep...
It's like an employee party.
I'm so excited. Yes, I do, page 25, page 25. On Ford Hill, okay, I'm afraid I know this answer, so I don't think it's as good a news, but it looks like our, we were way under budget in 2013, and in 2014, 15, we're hitting with that same budget number, why the discrepancy?
If you recall, when we had our discussion about the golf course five-year plan...
That's what I thought.
Which if you'll look on the other page, the golf course five-year plan that we projected over the five years, we accomplished that in this budget, but the green superintendent who is at Juniper Hill now is gonna be paid out of Division 85, which he lives at Ford Hill and also serves as the Ford Hill manager.
Okay.
So that's, that's really what that number is. And we've been down personnel, you know, we, the numbers are from, from the personnel, we've had, we had no curator, Russ Hatter was our acting curator, and we have a park manager who hadn't been built for four years now. So that's where it is.
Thank you.
Labor.
CJ, wait a minute, mate, that's it, thank you.
I had a question for Tom, the cost of the governmental, the cost for the automated trucks versus the old style trucks that we used to use, those compacters, it's about, depending on 40,000 to 50,000 dollars, different, something in that, it's ranging in fluctuation. So that, I mean, that's, it's still, even though we attritioned folks out of that division, there's still a little bit of an increased cost because of that, the cost of the trucks, that's still about one in a percentage of another position. We'll still come out, we should still come out ahead, but I was just gonna remind all the commissioners... We'll still come out, we should still come out ahead, but I was just going to remind all the commissioners just to understand that the cost of the type of trucks that we have to buy now are expensive. So just keep that in mind as we see those numbers. With employees attritioned out, there'll still be a higher cost because of the, not a higher cost, but a higher, higher cost of equipment. And we've got two now. We'll have two of the automated trucks.
We have actually three. We just have three.
Okay, if anything else, we'll go, any, go ahead.
I don't know if this is the right time, so maybe it's another time, but if, it seems like we, we all, based on what staff has told us, which I think is correct, we're going to have to do stormwater and we're wanting to start those projects when? Do we have an idea?
Depends on if we're, if we do not have a utility. There are no funds in this account, am I correct, Tom?
Yes.
In the budget number for the stormwater project.
And if we did the fee, we would be, the fee would, would start in the summer of two thousand fifteen?
Correct.
Well, then it seems to me prudent that if we have, I guess the, the way we left it tonight was is it's, I don't know where everybody is except sort of Commissioner Henning and myself, but it looks like the way we left it tonight is that it needs to be done. So the question then becomes, how are you going to pay for it? And, and, and how are you going to pay for it within sort of, when that would occur would reflect when to start? And you're basically telling us it needs to start by summer of two thousand fifteen?
Or sooner.
Or sooner. I mean, so if that's the case, shouldn't we not only have this budget to look at, not to give people more to do, but shouldn't we also have a, a budget that would also reflect cuts in recurring, recurring items that could then be utilized to fund the stormwater projects? Then you'd have that, that choice or the stormwater utility fee choice? Because I assume we've had these fellows that were here tonight, I assume that, I don't really know what direction we gave them except probably that this time it, we're not doing the engineering fee. So are we not going to have to look at this year's budget and cut three percent or this year's budget and cut one and a half percent and then one and a half percent out of next year's budget? I'm making up a percentage. That's not exactly right. Isn't that where we are or not?
Sounds right.
If I could make a comment, again, we're proceeding with projects with or without a stormwater fee. So as, as we do our projects, we're just putting additional load on the existing system.
Right. And, and what I'm, what I'm asking would not start as any later than we would if we had a fee.
Right.
I'm, I'm agreeing with you guys that we have to do it. I'm just saying that I think we should do it without the fee. Some people may want to have the fee. But I do think we need to, if there's, doesn't, didn't look like everybody was jumping up and down to spend the two-hundred-thousand dollars tonight for the engineering study, which then leads you to thinking that we need to look at those two options in a, in a more serious fashion than we have before.
So that would be. You're cutting three percent this budget.
It'd be one and a half percent out of this year's budget, one and a half percent out of next year's budget.
Is that about four hundred thousand?
One, one and a half percent's four hundred and change. If, if you figure three hundred and thirty thousand is one percent, then, and Steve can do it better than I can, but I think you're going to be looking at about four forty-five per year, which would be eight ninety. And y'all had given us a number of eight fifty as the bare bones.
It's going to be like, of course.
Thirty-three, one percent, three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifteen, four forty-five. Depending on which, whether it's thirty-three million or thirty-three million and some change. But anyway, I think one and a half percent probably be a good percentage to shoot for. And if you did it over two years, that's what it would be. That would be easier than taking three percent off of one year.
I would love it if we did not have to have a fee at all, but if we have one, I just appreciate we don't. We have to have it. We have to take care of the problem. And I'm trying to see in the long run, I don't know if this thing just keeps going year and year and year, year and year.
It will.
I don't see our budget being able to sustain that.
Well, what you do is you, 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 you take it out of recurring money. So you're, you're going, you're going to reserve this money that will permanently lower the budget because you're going to be taking it out of money you would have spent every year otherwise. It wouldn't be that you wouldn't spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on Mercedes six fifty. I'm making that up. It would be you wouldn't do something that recurs every year. And jump in, Steve, if I've said something wrong. He's depressed because it's been more figuring.
Yeah, no, no.
Just kidding, just kidding.
It also makes a big impact, the question was asked, what was the county leaning to it? Because I was sure hated. I mean, it just doesn't even look good if they do it and without a fee. And, you know, it was just, I think, I'm already getting a lot of complaints anyway about some things that we're, that people play in front of. They don't play in the county, but they get services and we're really trying to work well together and.
But you know, we're going to have to, Mr. Haynes, that, I know it doesn't help because I've tried to have the same conversation. They have a totally different set of issues. Their, their, the cost of their, what they need to do is much less than ours and, and these two gentlemen can verify that. It was something on the order of a million to a million two hundred thousand, a million four hundred thousand. Their number of projects are lower, but they, they can absorb, theirs is an easy, theirs situation is much, I believe, much easier than ours is as far as cost and funding. Do you think that's accurate?
I don't know if that number was all their projects or just the projects over the next five years.
And I think that's true.
That's the number that we gave.
But their number over the next five years was much lower than ours.
It was. So it was.
Well, I have the handouts that you're coming to ones that's got the two guys briefed. I can look at those, but I thought it was still a pretty good chunk of change.
I know they started out with a pretty significant list of projects like we did and it proved it down quite a bit.
Yeah, theirs are two million five hundred and ten thousand, so it's more than I thought.
And their first cut was quite a bit larger than that, too, just like ours.
Any suggestions? If it's the commission's preference that we not proceed with a stormwater utility, I think that significantly affects what we think we can do in terms of projects. Right now, we've got about five and three-quarter million in projects that could be done. One of our thoughts was we would trim that to about four million, issue debt for twenty-five years, reimburse ourselves through the stormwater utility. But if you're telling us that you're not interested in the utility, what I would suggest is you let staff come back to the drawing board, revise our five and a half million in projects and we do some cost benefit, come back to you with what we may be able to do in terms of a general fund project.
It'd be good to see to compare.
And, and we could still bond, though, couldn't we?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You can take two million and bond it over.
Or, or you, or you could, or you, okay, that's right, or, or you could bond the same amount.
We still have the permit. We're still going to have maintenance. We're still going to have billing. We have to deal with what we're going to deal with billing because by what is indicated, they would like us to move off of their billing. So we're going to have costs in addition to the bonding, the bonded debt for a two or three million dollar project. But I don't know that anybody here is prepared tonight to be able to say what effect this is going to have on our general fund if we scale back and do not have a utility and our revenue sources.
And let me, let me reiterate what I've said. I'm not, and it may be that we do. I'm not saying we need to scale back our projects if they're needed. I'm just saying the way we fund them, we would do it differently. But if, but if y'all come back and say, well, you know, that's not possible, or this is what you would have to do to do that. Because, because I don't want to, one of the things government does, and I'm sure I'm guilty of it too, is rather than doing something right, you do something poorly and then you end up with a worse problem than you did. So, okay.
Sure. I was saying, the thing too is I know we need equipment, vehicles in public works. And buyer department's going to need vehicles in the next few years because a lot of the frontline, well, the aerial truck, couple of engines.
We've, we've got an equipment plan worked out, you know, just like everything else will come due at some point.
I was going to say, so that's going to all, unfortunately, the spacing of, of your equipment is going to come closer together.
It's, it's going to hit about every four years, four to five years.
And those are big, I mean, like big, big expenses. Do you know what it is? I'll tap your head. I mean, it's going to be.
A typical pump will run about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
When you said every four years, like what we, the pumpers are four hundred something, the aerials are seven, eight.
Seven hundred thousand on today's prices. We've, we'd, in the near future, like to present something that would show what those look like, but for this year, it's, it's less than.
And that's going to be important to look at because we have to have those. And the police department's down from what we were buying years ago. We were buying tank cruisers. You've got dump trucks.
Well, I guess the question is, do you want double taxes?
No.
Okay, I mean, that's.
My point is making sure we can provide when, when people call nine-one-one and we've got a fire truck that's going to, kind of, it's not going to fall like the axle came off of one going down.
What, I mean, that's.
On the old pumper, wasn't it, was it a pumper or is it rusted out? And then the dump trucks, some of the dump trucks I saw had the bottom rusting out. That's why when you, when I said that, I said, we're getting a new.
We have things more.
Yeah. But I mean, those kind of things are, when we're, if we're going to go back and cut another one and a percent with projects, but you're going to start getting into, at, at some point in the next four or five years, you're going to have big equipment needs based on what was not bought on a, we, we had a really good cycle going, I think, at one point, and then it just kind of ground down to a halt.
Well, we spent three million dollars on equipment this year. That's more than we spent in hell on. I know we deferred it.
That was the point I was making, that a lot of the, the big equipment purchases have been put off and they're going to all come closer together than we had, we had it on a, we had a good fleet maintenance program at one point, I thought. I was just saying, those are going to be caveats to, to look at. We can't put a person in a dump truck that's unsafe or especially on a snowplow situation. Or the, or the, like we said, the fire truck when the, the axle fell off going down High Street, literally happened. You were here, right?
But if you do what you suggested, you know, at least you're giving options.
Sure.
And we're still in old business, right?
No, we haven't got there. We're still in budget.
We need a little commentary.
Pull the parish over here?
I'm back.
So is it, we'll get those figures and do some analog comparisons.
I'm going to pull our group back together and we're going to see what we can do and maybe May, maybe June.
It's good, at least something to compare to, a real estate decision.
So that, that, how does that impact our approval of this budget?
I said it's going to be kind of late, isn't it?
Means we'd be approving this one later, is that correct?
We might have a special meeting. We might have to have a special meeting.
We can come back for today, on May twelve, second reading of the budget in May twenty-six. Or whatever date we set because that's a memorial weekend.
We have to talk about that, too.
Yes.
It shouldn't take. You just make that a priority. Okay, any other items on the budget, if not discussion, you know, pending on the agenda, pending agenda?
Well, I have a question there. Would the board, does the budget ordinance come off?
Well, I think we'd leave it on there. And if we need to pass it, because if the information's not there, we'll just pass over. That way we're covered. Even if it's on the agenda, we can still break it off. Well, now if we can't because it's a special meeting.
Just leave it on there and then we can.
That's what I was saying, yeah, twenty-first, just leave it on.
What we need to, okay, what we need to, like a work type session or some type of session to discuss the alternative budget that they come up with? So why would we leave it on there?
I just wanted to leave it on there in case there's some.
In case like everybody goes home and thinks about it and decides to go with the fee.
And it's already on there.
Just in case.
It's easier to, to pass over something than it is to, on a special meeting, try to get it on there. Notice requirements. We still have time, though.
Robert knows that that's going to happen, but.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm.
That's fine.
Comments, watch, comments to ponder.
Or is that, that wouldn't be too gen, that's not too generous of a role. Okay, any other items on the agenda? Anybody had any questions about?
What?
So would we not, I'm sorry to still be on this crazy thing. So when the budget comes up at the next meeting, obviously three people could go that way, you're right, Commissioner Bowers, but what, you just, just doesn't get a, if nobody says anything, there's not a vote, it just doesn't get a first reading? Is that how that works?
I think somebody would move the pass over.
Okay, got it.
They could just take it off.
And because of the special meeting, it's going to make sense. Any agenda items? Staff reports are going to, probably since they've already done the budget, there's not too much to talk about, is there?
Did you have one quick thing on staff report?
On, remind me. Oh, man.
But I don't, I don't recall, so it's going to be good. You were the only person I thought. Does anybody have something?
Y'all had asked me to prepare a resolution supporting the renovation of Illinois MCA building. I made a.
Can you read it?
Relatively quick resolution. Let y'all look at it. If you want me to flower it up, I can.
Get yourself a copy. Don't you need a copy? Yeah, I've got it.
I've got one for this number. When you, when you look at this, I've just made it short and sweet.
Really? Very short, very sweet.
Right. I did not include any timeframe by which to finish the work and I did not include any requirement for progress on a periodic basis.
How about the support of small business development? We have entrepreneurship in the second one. Whatever. That's fine.
Any objections to?
I just would like, no, I didn't get to make my suggestion at the meeting because there was a movement to adjourn in a second and so I thought I would bring it up here tonight. So it was actually to somewhat support you, but I, it was to support you, but I, I think that what I would like to see is, I, I thought that what we were going to do in that meeting was, we had a very good presentation, we had a lot of good discussion, but I thought one of the things that would happen is, my idea is, and I, I would like for the developers to present to us their drafted schedule of how things will go and then for us to like, yeah, that'll work or we think that needs to be moved up a bit. I like, Commissioner Ruck would like to see something, but I would like it to originate with them. I don't want to tell developers. I don't want to tell developers how to do their project on what sort of timeframe, because I think that what I would rather do is have that presented to us and then determine if it's agreeable to us or not. I do wanna see something in the way of that, and somebody talk about phases and, um... So, I just didn't get to say that the other night.
Say it.
And I think that our city manager and... You're gonna work with them on that? Or...
I can contact the areas. If that's the commission direction, I guess.
Can I ask a question about that?
Oh, yeah.
If I understand correctly, does that mean that all code enforcement against this building ceases?
Good question.
As at this point?
I thought Rob Schaefer said no the other night to something. Wasn't that... You were doing like, something.
We can't suspend a law without taking action. We're not suspending...
We have, I assume. There's an ongoing appeal in Franklin District Court where the Old Y LLC has appealed the amended things, in fact, conclusions of law and order issued by the, uh... By the Board of Code Enforcement. And at this point, I would not recommend dismissing that lawsuit. I would recommend leaving that lawsuit in place. That lawsuit can move as fast. If, for instance, if the city wanted to, uh... File a motion for a briefing scheduled to get that case on a faster track, it could do that, or it could just leave it in place. And I recommend that we just leave it in place. We'd rather see that left in... I think, entering phases. I think that's left in place because that's ongoing. And I thought, as we were talking, we said at some point in the... Might be the end of the year, because I think somebody said, "Well, it'd be a new commission." It could be a new commission. You know, they would come back here, and then that would be the time... This other stuff would have happened, whatever's in the legal system. And then that would be the time to say, "Okay, now, do you have a..." And you had a term for some kind of developer's plan. Somebody mentioned it, because they don't have one right now. You know, and that would be the time that... That, you know, I think some other phases and timelines could be put on. I don't think it's... Since we've already did this, there's no rush to change anything to...
You don't wanna go back to square one.
That's right.
So, to answer your question, we haven't suspended... We haven't changed any, um, of the ordinances that would prevent any ongoing...
That's correct.
...violations to not be issued.
When's the next time the... Will there be... When's the next time that they would be... How does that work?
It depends on what they do in the court.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and if the city wins, then our violation will start at the end of the timeframe that we will give them, which is normally 30 days to start all of our...
Making the repairs?
All of our violation notices again. And we just need to know if...
So...
If we're just spinning our wheels and they're just gonna, you know, have an open door, we're... It's gonna stay the same way that it has, because that's what we've done for... I've been here 17 years, and I started on it when I first started it. And it's still right where it's at. And we just need to know if we should just halt, give them time to bring you on something, or what? Because, you know, we're... We're in a dilemma here, because we've either got to do something or we've got to kinda cease all code enforcement action against you.
Well, I don't think we have the authority without taking formal action to ask the planning division to cease doing what you're supposed to do. Is that right? Is that determined?
Okay, but here's... Here is my thought. And I believe if you all do this resolution, they're gonna think that they have just an open blanket, that they don't have to be in no hurry to do anything.
Well... That's true. They don't.
That's just... That's just a personal look. And then, you know, it makes our job twice as hard when somebody else, we're coming down on them and they're pointing at this all the time. I just want to be able to treat everybody fairly. I don't want anybody to think that we, as the city, are giving the grays and them a special treatment.
And I don't think that's anybody's intention here to ask...
Oh, and I don't disagree with that, but I understand. I believe that's the perception that we're gonna... We're gonna see.
Well, I know that that is true, because I've had those comments.
It would be the same thing as us asking the police department not to go after people who are speeding in the school zone because we...
Well, the only... The only leverage we have... We're not in the development business, and most of us don't know anything about development, to be perfectly blunt. The only leverage we have on this situation, the only reason why we're involved in it is because they violated code. That's the only reason we even have a dog in this fight. And then they didn't... And then they didn't fulfill the actions they were supposed to do under the orders that they were given. So, the only leverage we have is that. And, um, I'm not gonna spend much time... More time. I've spent too much of my own time on this topic. But I'm not for the resolution. But if everybody else is, that's fine. I do believe we need to have, as I said three times at the prior meeting, I do believe we have to... Need to have staff come up with an agreement for them and have timelines, et cetera. I understand, Commissioner Bowers, that's a good point to wait for them to come up with it. We've been waiting. We're now in year seven. They still don't have a plan. And they still haven't filed anything, and they haven't done anything, except bring in really good people to make a really good presentation. But to do this, it takes M-O-N-E-Y.
Right. And I'm not saying wait until they want to give us a... When I was talking... When I'm talking about plan, I'm talking about a drafted schedule of what you expect to have done by when. For example, by August, we expect to have our financing in place. By October, we expect to... And then, you know, we talked the other night about some progress reporting, so that the city manager's getting that. And I'm just saying that I think they're in a better position to put that plan together to bring to us than for us to say, "By August, I want you to have..." Because all that's gonna defeat the whole thing.
I don't think they'll do it on their own. I believe they've indicated they won't.
Well, that's part of what we say that we need.
Fine, fine. Somebody else needs to say it, they'll do better.
But, well, I think that... That is what I'm saying. I want them to present that to us, because that...
How are you gonna force them to do it? You've already... Y'all've already told them that we're not gonna come up with any kind of agreement.
Not in a... Well, agreement... We can't have an agreement until we see what the developers... The sequential whatever, the timeline.
But if you don't ask them when you want it, why would they give it to us?
I think we need to have that by the end of June. That's my simple thought. And... But I'm not a developer, but I've heard some people talk about what you have to go through with that. But I have a question related to your question, Mayor. And that is, when somebody gets a code violation, don't they have a certain period of time during which they can correct the violation? And don't they then, uh, say to you, "Here's what we're doing to progress towards that?" And as long as you see progression, are they not able to continue to work on that? So, this is a larger-scale violations. Larger scale. So, if we had this resolution, and we're getting a timeline of when they expect things to be completed by, and we're getting progress reports a couple times a year, whatever often you wanna do it, then would that not be larger-scale, "Look, here's how we are addressing the code violation," so that we're seeing progress? Do you see what I'm asking?
Yes, ma'am.
We do that on small-scale things, right?
I was gonna say, the thing would be is if we actually saw progress, and each time that we got to this point, we've not seen any progress. And that's why we're in District Court, because this has been before our Code Enforcement Board twice this last time. And that's how it wound up in District Court, because that's under our ordinance. That's what we have to do after it's got two board orders.
I think that now, what the commission is doing is we're saying, "We support your efforts to develop this. The city wants this done. We wanna see developers develop. We wanna..." We talk about that all the time, bringing business to Frankfurt. We wanna see this develop. We're behind you now. And I think that might help the process along. I think. I'm hopeful.
Well, we've already voted to support the resolution. This is the wording.
Okay.
I like the wording.
Do you want to add, Mayor? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Do you wanna add language indicating that, uh, words to the effect, "Expect progress to be made and to continue"? I mean, do you wanna add some kind of requirement for...
You know, when I think this is good right now, let me tell you why. Because all that kinda stuff... We had that conversation earlier about attended, and progress to be made is very vague. And what I want is a draft from them sequentially how things will unfold and on some kind of time scale. And, you know, I'm not willing to sit around and wait for 10 years for a ribbon cutting, but it might be to wait five years for a ribbon cutting. And so, I'd like to see what's gonna happen between this point and the ribbon cutting. In other words, so we can get educated about development, too. You know, how this is gonna unfold.
I think we need to get a bunch of investors together. Then we have the money, and we can get it done.
I think that'd be great.
I'll put in the first 50 who wants to go.
I got $1.
I'll put in 10.
So, what is the percentage?
56.
You know, and I did tell... I did tell the grays that I was... Am I not experienced as a developer? I think by the end of the year, that's gonna do it for me.
Well, I don't expect them to be, like, actually doing any physical rehab on it by October, November. But, you know, by when could you know that the financing will be in place? That's what I need to know. That's what I would like to know. And then, because once that's in place, I think the rest will just follow. I don't know. What do you think, Robert?
Well, you know, I've never been optimistic about it.
I know.
And I don't think that this project can work. And I do not think it's viable. But I'm wrong a lot. But I also don't believe it was right for us to not be willing to come up with a mutual agreement with mutually agreed-upon language by both parties that we could hold them to, and they could hold us to. We do have leverage. But, like I said, y'all, on this one, you know where I am, so proceed.
And actually, just the comment, I actually liked what you was talking about, you said, "But mutual agree."
I said that.
But I just didn't think that was the time to do it. We had originally said we wanted to bring everybody to the table. And it was primarily them. We were already at the table. So, it was bringing them to the table, because I don't have the 12 to 17 years of that experience. I have one year. So, I wanted, you know... And it wasn't just for me. I seemed at the time, say, "Okay." But then it grew from that, because from that particular one, it, uh... One thing, you know, you could've just said, "No, we're just gonna tear it down." Where that would defeat the purpose of even having them come to the table. I'm saying that phase, when you're talking about phases, that would be the next phase. And say, "Okay, now, we need some mutual guidelines, because you can see we're supporting you. We support your efforts." But, you know, by the end of the year, we need to see, okay, uh... The plans, I think, Commissioner Bowers just mentioned, not wanting to wait 10 years, but give something. Because I thought I saw somewhere where something could be done as early as this summer. But that would be just, you know, that ain't... That ain't the money that, uh... We're talking about... We're talking about, you got to have the whole thing financed. I was glad to see them at least go to Frankfurt High School and, you know, at least request to purchase the land for parking. I did see that area that what you, on the left-hand side, looks small to me, but I'm now saying not a developer. You know, and I've seen these other places that have been developed. They look very nice. I'm not sure it could be done. You know, but it's one of those, I thought, at this point, we would've really given them a true, "It's okay, this is it." You know, because, um, you know, I'm... The place that says that I don't pay as much attention, never have, but it just came up on, you know, my radar since we've been talking about it. And especially thinking about what's gonna happen on that Second Street, you know, all the upgraded stuff next to the school. That could be a very nice area, especially if we get the lights to go with the bridge. I mean, that could be, you know, something that years from now, we'll look back and say, "Boy..."
We're glad we did that.
That, you know, that... And I'm just saying, it could happen. And I, you know... I know we have something said, "It won't happen." And one might say, "It will happen." I'm just saying, it could happen, and we're taking these steps, you know, because we now have information, you know, with... Yes, it should've been done a long time ago, but I don't think it could have by anybody, not the grays, not anybody else. The way that the economy took a dip, if it was gonna be torn down, that would've been the time to tear it down, because it's gonna... That economy took a while to get back where we were.
Well, they've been doing another project, so you can't do all of your projects at one time, so... Well, I couldn't do it. I mean, I couldn't build a dog in it.
Even if they weren't doing that one, they could not have done that one.
I think that was because they caught on fire.
Business language.
I like it.
May I ask to change one thing? Instead of saying entrepreneurship, that whereas the city of Frankfurt seeks to encourage entrepreneurship, I would like to change that to, whereas the city of Frankfurt seeks to encourage economic development versus entrepreneurship. I don't know if the rest can...
I like that what Katie Commissioner Henn said. And then I would like to take the entrepreneurship up to line one. Whereas the support of entrepreneurship is... I don't know if it's a priority, but it's a value to growing business. Whereas the support of entrepreneurship is a priority to growing the business of... The business community of Frankfurt. I like the... What Commissioner Henn said for line two, if we could somehow get the entrepreneurship up to the top. I don't know what you think. Anything, Commissioner?
They would take care of it. You got businesses and business communities, you can say, "Why?" We'll kind of clear it up.
Did you get that, Robert?
I did.
They'll take care of that double business in the top line.
You got it.
And they'll take care of Commissioner Henn's as well.
Bottom line is what it is.
And I just think we really need to hope that they get it done, because if they can get it done, I think it would be a huge asset to write in this area. I think it would be awesome. So, I think we all need to think positive, at least for a little while. Just for a little while, give it a chance, you know? Just for a little while.
We'll pay to take...
Right, right. Take just like a...
Well, I wanted to escrow the money so that we- we hold into it, but I try to be positive, Commissioner Bowers.
Just for- just for six months, and get that plan in place.
I've got a feeling it's gonna be longer than that, but go ahead.
Mayor, do you- do you want to indicate that the Board of Commissioners may review this resolution, or do you want to just leave it as is?
Yeah, we'll look at- we'll look at it again on the...
We're only gonna make two changes.
Really, when I say "may review the resolution," that would be in December of 2014 or January of 2015.
What?
That's perfect.
I mean, do you want that? That's just, you know, if there's been no- no progress at all...
I understand that.
Then you may want to review the resolution and withdraw support?
I'm sure.
You know, I don't know.
Well, could you put in here, "This resolution is in effect until..."
December 31st.
I like it.
Because it didn't, you know, it- you gotta have something to protect this, so like I said, this is in effect forever.
Do it, and I'm gonna leave it under the glass, so if whoever comes will be here. The next person can see that. Please review this by...
Yesterday.
If this is 2020, and you have reviewed it by now, please review it. You can leave it in the glass. It's sealed. It's right there.
Are you gonna put a date in?
I was just gonna put the Board of Commissioners "may review the resolution."
It really isn't.
Review it when you want to.
Here's the only thing I don't want to do.
Or you could say, "At a future time."
Okay, I just- I don't want to... I don't wanna undermine that we're really wanting this to happen, though. You wanna do that?
Well, nothing precludes us from reviewing it, so if you don't wanna put something in there for a time, a date certain, put the right number in. Say 3rd and something. Did I say 3rd?
That'll wait.
Not a word.
That's when the House was- the staff was supposed to- the House was supposed to have a 3rd.
Is that a staff report?
Next thing.
Where we on now?
Staff report, still in staff reports.
Any words on the- when the lights are going in downtown? I don't- I didn't notice that they're in yet, but this, you know?
On St. Clair?
Yeah.
I have been calling. They're not in yet.
Well, so, I thought we ordered them in October.
I know, it was like, we had to rush.
Trying to rush them to get them here, and then...
We still have. I've called the last three days.
Did you already pay for them?
No.
Okay. All right. And the next thing, since you're here, Tom, is the- in the update, the two-way traffic study, I guess, came back, where you guys met with the guy who retired?
The state said that making Main Street two-way doesn't, I'll use his, doesn't blow up the system or the model, and in high, that's what could happen.
Yeah, I know.
Now, there's still more that we have to look at. We have to look at the geometry, with turning radiuses and sight distance and sight triangles, and, uh... So, that's- that's step two.
Thank you for finally getting that followed up. I don't, it's been ongoing, trying to get in touch with people. Thank you. And the last one is, I heard something came through last summer regarding Cove Springs, and then another message came through regarding Cove Springs again, that since Mr. Riccardi's moved out and the cop has moved in, that they have trouble getting into the park, that the gates are always closed, that they wanted to get into the park this past weekend, but they weren't able to, and it's kinda hit or miss. So, I don't know if there's any thing to- to look at or to- to post up front regarding... I know it says park closes at dusk. I don't know what time these people are trying to get into the park, but I'm more than happy to forward the message to you that I...
Is it the same- is it the same person?
Yes. Could I just forward the message?
Nobody else. It's just- it's one person.
Yeah, who sent something, I believe it was last summer. We got one.
I can't- I can't remember exactly who- what it is, but somebody that wants to get in with their telescopes and do something that...
Oh, uh-huh.
And then I eat and stuff, and we have made accommodations for him.
Uh-huh, and that's part of the message, is that when Jim was there, he's able to...
Well, he was to call, and- and we did, he- after that first email, we did make accommodations for him to- to actually do that again.
Is it okay if I just forward it over to you, so you have the information?
It's time to come out of the gate.
Throw some eggs on the front porch as you go by. That's it, for me.
I've got five, but I'm gonna send mine by email to the city manager. Old business, but I'm just gonna skip them.
You bounce them? New business?
Oh, we gotta re- we gotta schedule a meeting now, wouldn't we?
Yes.
Yeah. That was one of them?
Y'all went like dominoes there.
Well, it looks like, if we do May, we're talking about the 12th and the 19th, I think. Because you gotta do those two, you're in June, that's what you're gonna do till the first- the first month, first month.
What meeting are we talking about?
We're talking about that vote meeting.
In May?
In May.
On the 19th?
It would just have to be the 19th, wouldn't it?
Or the 27th.
A Tuesday?
Oh, that's the day after tomorrow.
Yes. We should be rested.
I might still be resting.
It doesn't have to be on a Monday. Ah, that thing in there.
Outside the box.
That opens it up.
So, what are we doing? What's good for you?
I'm used to coming on Mondays. That's the only reason I was keying on Mondays, 'cause then I won't ever forget.
Let's keep- we'll stay with Mondays. They won't ever forget. Yeah, hopefully we won't have any classes at make. I'm signed up to teach, and now I'm kinda hoping it doesn't work out. Anyway, Monday would be good.
So, we're saying the 12th and the 19th?
The 12th is the work session, regularly scheduled work session.
Okay, to keep in mind, it's gonna throw us into a special meeting, so we have to be very calculated about what our budget readings are gonna be, if any.
And it's gonna throw us into a special, even if we did it on another day during the week, it would still be special.
We might have to have a special meeting anyway, then.
Because our ordinance says second...
Another's a special meeting, I'm sorry, too. So, we might have to go the 19th and the 27th.
We could change the ordinance just for this one time and then change it back.
What?
Take two readings?
And we can do it.
Oh, I thought that's a special meeting.
We can have two quick special meetings, and change it so we don't have to have a special meeting.
I'm not listening to you.
Let's just make a special meeting. We'll- we'll be fine.
May 19th, does that sound...
Can we make a motion? We can't vote, Mayor.
You can just suggest.
But we can suggest the 19th.
You can suspend our rules.
I don't wanna do that.
I don't say I'll do that. Then I'll feel like I'll be going every town.
Okay, so we got it?
What do we have?
What do we have?
Looks like we got the 19th, maybe.
Does that work for everybody?
I'll try to get them to talk to her.
Oh, it's for that night we're doing that?
Well, I'll try to look nice. I mean, that would- everybody would be here, right?
What happened to the 5th? That's a- that's a, no, you said the, they said the 2nd and the 4th, so I won't...
No, we can still do it. You just get it. You can do two special meetings.
I think if you wanna do the 27th, we can, but it's a Tuesday.
I can do either one.
You're talking about May?
You're talking about May. The 21st?
I won't be here that night.
The last name was Big Shee.
Oh, really? You said the 21st.
I don't know if that was real.
No, she said the 21st.
No, my son's leaving out, going out of the country that day. I won't be here.
What do you wanna do?
I thought we were doing the 19th. But I'm flexible.
I'm really flexible that moment.
We're just talking, anyway, we're discussing 12th and 19th. Can I go to my next one?
And I can- can I say that I'm gonna, for me, and if it doesn't work out, you need to me, go ahead and do it. But I need to check my- my phone's not syncing with my...
Okay.
I'm having to look and...
So, it might change, is that what you're saying?
And if I'm the one, I don't wanna be the one that's upset.
Well, I mean, it's...
But let me ask the other question.
I didn't think I'd be here today.
It has to be decided tonight?
No, no.
So, right now, that could be tentative, 'cause we got other work sessions before May.
That's right. Everybody can think about it. There are the plans, Henry.
So, the 19th is not settled?
Tensive.
Okay, thank you.
So, I should like put it in there? This might... Can we make this scheduling harder?
More difficult than you?
I did, sorry.
That's right. It was on schedule. I just got a question. I didn't respond to one email, but I was, yeah, Commissioner Roach had already responded. This is about the delinquent taxes and that list. Have we screened to make sure there are no other ones on there? Because that's a black eye.
The delinquent- the delinquent tax and the payment online and...
Yeah, let me- let me say what happened on that. Did you see my email today, what- what happened on that?
No, I haven't seen it yet.
Okay, uh, I got- got, I reckon it's Commissioner Roach sent an email to me, but anyway, I called just to verify what had happened. We had a- one gentleman that was making payments online, and he was making payments across the table at the counter, both ways, installment payments. But it wasn't going through Rob's office. Typically, Rob gets all the delinquents through his office. He was making payments and I- I was unaware of it. Now, one of- one of our staff person, in fact, we had 400 delinquents on there, and they went through there and looked, and they- that name didn't jump out at them. And they- they did pull, we had to pull those delinquents, actually, the installment delinquents, we had to pull them off manually. So, it didn't get pulled off the list. And his name went out in the paper inadvertently, and I'm, you know, I called him today and apologized to him, and I told him, I said, "Right now, our system just is not able to track the delinquent payments when you make a delinquent payment installment-wise. It's just not able to track that." So, I'm in the process of contacting our web payment system folks, see if they can make a change in the software so that we can accept installment payments online for the property tax. Right now, we're just not able to do that, and- and if we're not gonna be able to do it right now, then we're gonna have to put a note on the- on the website saying that we can't accept installment payments. And typically, we don't take any installment payments unless, you know, folks come into Rob's office and say, "I need to make an installment payment on my property tax." We just don't- we don't take those.
But we're pretty sure he's the only one, of the people that were printed.
Well, I'm gonna say, I can't- I can't answer that. I'll- we'll continue to, I'll- I talked to my staff today about it, to see if there's anybody else out there like that. I'm not aware of any, you know, they- they said they pulled all the- all the installment payments off the system that were, because those are all showing as delinquent. So, they pulled the ones off that were flowing through Rob's office. Now, I- I assumed that was the only one that was making the payments. I haven't heard of any more of them. But I agree with you. I don't like that. Kinda bad press, or bad... Said, I called him up and I talked to him on the phone and I apologized to him, and he seemed to be okay with it, but I said, "I'm gonna make excuses. It was a mistake."
So, we're gonna make some sort of systematic change?
Yeah, I'm gonna try and make a systematic change, yes, yes. We're trying to, that's one more. Apologize for that again.
And actually, I have one other thing, but I wasn't sure if it's appropriate to bring it up here. I really wanted to do it when we have more people, but I wanted you all to know that, uh...
I'll go get some, hold on.
You stay here. You'll work 10 people.
Well, what does that mean?
Just talk for other man. But our mayor, Bill May, was recognized at a functioning election cap Alpha Psi, which is a historically African-American fraternity. And, I mean, you know, it doesn't say you have to be African-American to be a part of it, but it's just the way it is and the schools he's set up at. And I was glad to be there, you know, to see him honored, and they gave him a nice, you know, plaque, and a lot of speakers spoke on his behalf of things, you know, the 50-year march and the support that all the people in the city gave, and also, you know, several other things, and people knew him, you know, personally from years of, you know, work for the community. So, I was appreciative that I knew the person up there, being honored since I was on the back row, and I'm a member of that fraternity on the back row. But I did get my name called under 103 people, that she done something in her life. I'm not- I'm not complaining. I'm really here to tell- let you all know that it was actually a very good honor to sit there and see your mayor out there on stage. Good job, Bill.
I'll say on stage, 142. You look good all the time. He was actually giving out an award last...
Guess that would be for our new public relations person. Y'all missed the opportunity!
I do them now.
I guess I just wanted to- another clarification. It sounds like we're eliminating the lateral line fee, and so, it sounds like we're eliminating it after June. Is that accurate?
It would be effective with the next budget year, July 1st.
So, it would be, June would be the last month?
It's gotta be done by ordinance, so it's gonna take two months to get that in.
So, can we make sure we're on that? I'm sure y'all are already on it, but... Count on the quicker the better.
Move for adjournment.
Second. Oh, I'll let you do it.
No, I didn't know. She said, "I'm waiting to hear for adjournment if she..."
Move for adjournment.
Second by Commissioner Hennings. Any discussions?
Yeah, that's...